Would you please put your phones on silence or vibrate? And we have a lot of dignified guests here tonight, but I want to recognize one individual. I think this is her first meeting, and she's new to the school board, but I think she needs to be recognized, and that's Naomi Elizabeth Clark. Ms. Clark, we welcome you. The other school board members, I think everybody knows, and like I said, we have a lot of dignitaries in the audience, and again, I welcome each and every one of you.
Thank you.
You're all welcome. You're all welcome. This is your court, your place. Madam Clark, roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Here. If you'd please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear holy Father, with grateful hearts, we begin this month with the Author and Finisher of our faith. We come praying for Thy blessing for every man and woman in this assembly representing all the people of Craven County. We recognize our inability to exist at our best without Thy supreme wisdom, for Thou hast said, "At contrite heart, O God, Thou wilt not despise." And because of this, we seek supreme direction in the deliberation in our need for divine petition. We further recognize our imperfection, and beseech Thy forgiveness when we err. Grant, dear Father, Thy unhindered blessing to all those assembled at this moment remembering Thy words: Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. Thank You for loving us and praying that we may in turn love You with grateful, overflowing hearts. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, I'd like to take the chairman's privilege. We have a group in the audience I'd like to recognize before we get started, and by doing that, I'd like to call up our cooperative extension director, Tom Glasgow. Tom, welcome, and I'll let you turn this over to you, sir.
The board has been very supportive of Clean Sweep since I became involved in it, and in response to that, we've tried to expand our cleanup events, the number that we have in a year. And of course, we started the first Saturday of April this year with an event in Havelock, and it was our first one. We had very good turnout, a lot of enthusiasm, and we had enough people that I was getting a little nervous about where to send everybody, and that's where Commissioner McCabe made a big difference for us, came and took a group out to the Adams Creek and Temple Point area. Lots and lots of bags were filled up with trash, and afterwards, this group assisted the commissioner in taking all the stuff to the convenience center, taking care of it. So Commissioner McCabe and myself would like to recognize this group that's here tonight, and for them to come up front here as I call their name. We'll start with the Quist family. We have Jade, Mike, and Michael Quist.
Come on over here.
And we also have Anna Fuchs and Anthony Fuchs.
You don't have to be shy, hon. We're not going to scare you. We're scary, but we won't scare you.
Well, especially, I would just conclude, in particular, the young people who are helping with these events set the very best example and educational lesson that we could ever get. So we appreciate them, and personally appreciate Commissioner McCabe's help on that first Saturday of April.
Thank you all. Thank you so much, very much.
Thank you, dear. I appreciate it, Chairman.
She's a voice leader of everybody.
She can be loud when she wants to be.
Thank you all for stopping by. That's the age we've got to start them. That's the age. We've got to get the volunteers and get them involved in pushing them forward. So I appreciate all that step forward. That's a small, the rest of them are in school, nighttime, getting ready for school tomorrow, so there's more, but they were willing to come forward, so we really appreciate that. All right, next on the agenda, petitions of sender, agenda.
Excuse me, Chairman. Could we go back and approve the agenda?
Oh, excuse me. Okay. Can do.
I'm making motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Yes. Now I can go, right?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. Petition of citizens, agenda topics.
Reverend David Fuentes, if you'd give us your name and address, please, sir.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is David Fuentes. I'm the pastor at West New Bern Presbyterian Church, and I live at 31 Pier Point in Riverbend. I'm coming here today, first, to thank you all for all that you do, and second, to talk on Agenda Item 6 and 8. Agenda Item 6, because I want to thank all of the many organizations that are working to get people back at home and back to home, and so many other organizations have done such a great job doing that. However, we have a housing shortage problem. We have resources to get people back in homes, but no homes to get them back into. This is causing a problem. Folks are squatting in homes, folks are camping out, folks are having to rent homes that are not safe. We have a great number of folks that after the storm are still looking for safe, affordable housing here in Craven County. And the second agenda item with the county planning is we have, we've had several meetings with folks from all over the area with the Craven County Disaster Alliance, Recovery Alliance, on housing, long-term, short-term plans. And what we would like to do through the Craven County Disaster Recovery Alliance is invite the county to participate in a meeting with the city, the redevelopment commission, Housing Authority, to share all of the long-term plans that we have, and most importantly, discuss ideas for short-term housing solutions. I know that city and county are not necessarily in the business of housing, but this is a people issue. This is something that I think we all can come together to come up with some solutions. So a good friend of mine, who has done a lot of work with this, Mike Williams from Habitat for Humanity, will be sending out emails to invite the city, the county, redevelopment commission, and Housing Authority to partake in these meetings to kind of come up with some good short-term solutions while also sharing what a lot of our long-term solutions are. So thank you.
No, thank you, sir. And once we get that, you know, I'll be there. I'm sure some of the other board members will be there, but once we get the word, we'll be more than willing to.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hal James.
I'm Hal James. I'm chairman of Coastal Carolina Tax Payers Association. I live at 305 Calico Drive in Craven County, and the agenda item I want to talk about is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. But one quick remark on another one. I noticed on the agenda that there wasn't any prayer, and I was concerned about it, so I was glad to see we did have a very appropriate prayer. At a recent meeting, the board approved by consent agenda a resolution to fully fund as needed the juvenile crime prevention council. Now, see, by today's agenda, that the organization will request the same amount as last year, quarter of a million dollars, or to be more precise, $254,570. That figure was arrived at by juggling last year's expenses among their programs, some cost up, some down, and then miraculously arriving at within $10 of the exact same total again this year. Now, I ask you, if you were a business owner, president, or chairman of a board of a private business, and at least two of you have had that experience, and some department head came up to you and said, handed you their projections of costs for his or her department, wouldn't you be suspicious if the methods used to arrive at that coincidental budget projection just happened to be? I hope to learn a lot more about this program before the vote is taken. And you know, the business about the budget, you've said that you think it's going to be tough to budget this time because the cost, I mean, the evaluation on housing and property has gone down. But, you know, I would suggest that you take a look at it as a business person would and say to each department head, cut some of your costs. Cut them. Sometimes by a certain percent, 5%, 10%, whatever's reasonable, because a lot of times, it's not really feasible for a person to increase their cost of their services. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Okay. No further on the petition of citizens. Next, huh? Cut it in, right. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion on the consent agenda, I'd like to pull a D resolution seeking legislative support for House Bill 724. I'd like to have that read before I have a motion, please.
Resolution seeking legislative support for House Bill 724. Whereas House Bill 724 was filed on April 11th, 2019, and whereas House Bill 724 is entitled, a bill to be entitled, an act to prohibit the use of misleading telephone identification methods of telephone solicitations. And whereas House Bill 724 sets out that no telephone solicitor shall cause misleading information to be transmitted to users of caller identification technologies, or otherwise block or misrepresent the origin of the telephone solicitation. And whereas House Bill 724 is scheduled to become effective December 1st, 2019, if it is ratified, and whereas most, if not all, citizens of Craven County, the state of North Carolina, and the United States are regularly inundated with calls from local telephone numbers, which end up being unwanted robocalls. And whereas many of these individuals are called while at work and answer the calls because either it is mandatory that calls be answered, or it is felt that they are legitimate, which interrupts workflow and productivity, causing a hindrance on the economy. And whereas Craven County urges the General Assembly to take a proactive approach to ending these unsolicited robocalls by ending their ability to use misleading information regarding the origin of the telephone solicitation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Craven County Board of Commissioners hereby requests that the North Carolina General Assembly vote in support of House Bill 724 and/or its contents, and be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the state's congressional representatives with the request for action adopted the sixth day of May, 2019.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, consent agenda is a meeting of April 15th, 2019, and April 26th, 2019, special section, tax releases and refunds, EMS fire department budget amendment, and resolution seeking legislative support for House Bill 724.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Board of Education budget presentation, Dr. Megan Doyle.
Good evening, Chairman Liner, Vice Chairman Mark, and members of the Board of Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening to present the Craven County Schools Board of Education current expense budget proposal. Before I begin, I want to start with a couple of celebrations. These are things that not only are we proud of in Craven County schools, but also, these are things that I believe that our Board of Commissioners and our community should be proud of. First, all of us in this room know that it took a tremendous effort to recover from the hurricane, and I'm here in front of you because of the support that you all provided to us, the Board of Education, as well as the county manager and county administrative staff. But also, I want to say that it represented a significant amount of work on the part of our staff as well to recover and to help our neighbors and loved ones recover as well. We had damaged almost every single school, and really were able to return to school on our part, considering the damage relatively quickly in many cases. Also, I think that we should be proud of the fact that we have begun to work on improving the market for our teachers in Craven County, and increased our supplement from 7% for all classroom teachers to 8.5% this past budget year. We continue to compete around the region with our neighbors who still offer higher supplements, but our request this year will represent a smaller step because we acknowledge the challenges that all of us are encountering, but also want to continue to make some progress in that regard. We began some classified staff salary adjustments. I'll provide some specific anecdotal evidence about why that was needed. We did not do everyone because we did not have the funds to do everyone. We are going to continue that work over the next several years, again, trying to build these increases over time instead of trying to put everything out in front right up in one school year. We are increasing the number of devices that we're providing to our lower-grade students going to grade three and then up through grade five in all of our elementary schools. Another thing that I think this community should be very proud of, and something that really was lost during the hurricane, is the fact that one of our schools, W.J. Gerganus Elementary School in the Havelock area, was awarded National Blue Ribbon status. This means it's among the 300 best schools in the country. And really, it was lost because it was announced right at the exact same time that we were recovering from the hurricane. We were not in school, and that school has had some celebrations, but the exposure to that school really just hasn't been there. And so I've told the principal of W.J. Gerganus, Ms. Hurst, that we're going to continue to bang that drum as long as we can get some mileage out of it. Vanceboro Farm Life Elementary School has begun a leadership development program at their school, The Leader in Me, and I think that anyone who's been a part of some of the updates that we provided on our strategic plan have been able to see the evidence of the work that's being done by those students and that staff. New Bern High School is working on really making sure that all of their staff are trained in AVID, which is advancement via individual determination, giving students the skills, really the workplace skills that are going to make them not just successful in getting to college, but successful in the world of work, to include collaboration, inquiry, communication skills. We've provided professional learning in a more systematic way, aligned to our goals this school year, and you can see a list of those. And we have adopted curriculum in K-5 English Language Arts and in 6-8 Math, and these represent some pretty significant improvements as our teachers, since curriculum has changed over the last several years, standards have changed over the last several years, have not had the actual curriculum resources, and so they've spent a significant amount of time planning when we really want them to spend the time working with students. So we have a number of budget challenges this year. One day, I'm going to stand up in front of you and not talk to you about challenges. That will probably be the day that I'm retiring. This next slide really does summarize the biggest of our challenges right now. And just as our pastor from New Bern Presbyterian, West New Bern Presbyterian, is that correct? Was talking about housing, we are seeing the same impact on our schools and our students. You can see, on the ninth day of school, which was the last day that we had before we dismissed for Hurricane Florence, we were up around the same number, or climbing towards the same number we had been on the ninth day the previous year. So we were looking to kind of have a flat line in our enrollment. And then we had Hurricane Florence, and we had 1,000 students that were displaced from their homes. We had over 100 staff that were displaced from their homes. Some of those staff are still displaced, and I would say, we don't have an accurate number, so please do not quote me on this, but we're estimating somewhere between a quarter to half are still displaced. And we lost about 300 students altogether. When we lose those students, we lose the state funding that goes with them. Unfortunately, those students aren't, they don't pick up and leave in whole classroom sizes. Two or three kids leave out of this class, another kid leaves out of this other classroom, and it's very difficult for us to make adjustments budget-wise because students don't move around in neat packages. This is the forecast that was provided during the redistricting that happened in Craven County Schools several years ago, and what you'll see is we are expecting a decline in enrollment. You can see those red numbers kind of show us where we're expecting to be. What you can also see, though, is this school year, which was the 2018-19 school year, we should have been at 13,866. And as I mentioned, we were kind of on track to be at that number, but we are now below the number that we're projected to be for 2021, 2022. Again, these are challenges because dollars follow students. Here is another significant challenge that has developed over time, but has been really significantly exacerbated this year, and that is that we have several schools that are relatively small. And it is a good thing to have a small school, but there is a number below which we really have any kind of economy of scale. For example, at a school where we have about 270 students, there's only one, in some cases, teacher per grade level. That means there's no one for them to collaborate with and work with. If there's an issue with a student and they might need a different setting, there's not really an option to give that student, if they need a different setting. There are just a lot of challenges, and you'll see kind of what those challenges mean to our larger schools here on the next slide. So this is Arthur Edwards Elementary School, and Commissioner Liner and Commissioner McCabe, please do not think that I'm picking on Havelock. However, this is the place where we are seeing some significant fluctuations in enrollment and where those fluctuations are really having an impact on two different schools. We have Arthur Edwards Elementary School, which is a very large membership school. I shouldn't say very large, but an average size, kind of in the sweet spot of school sizes, and then Graham Varden. At each of those schools, we have one assistant principal, one guidance counselor, one front office receptionist, and pretty old buildings, quite frankly. One of them, we have self-contained students, two classes, actually three, and one, we have one self-contained classroom. But you can see, and this was, the idea for this slide came from the guidance counselor at Arthur Edwards. And basically, what she said to me during a meeting that I attended was, you know, I have a ratio of one counselor to 625 students. This other school has a ratio of one counselor to 274 students. There's not even close to the same level of support that's being provided. Arthur Edwards, by the way, and Graham Varden, very similar in terms of the percentage of students that are military-connected. And those students have really big challenges that they come into our schools with. They're very resilient young people, but they also are students that need a lot of support from us, and one counselor really just does not cut it. So what does that mean if we have a school that's so small? What is the impact to our budget? And I'll be honest with you, this is information that we presented to our board in a budget work session, and our board was, they thought it was very important that we present this information to be transparent, but also to show that the challenges are very real for us. This is what it costs us, either in local money or in using other state funding categories to staff these small schools. So you can see that these are the average costs or the actual costs of these staff members. We just took a shot in the dark with two custodians, but depending on the square footage of the building, there might be two and a half or three, okay? So this is probably a conservative number, where you see water or electricity or gas. We took a five-year average, so we're not just putting numbers out there at random. And the one number on here that is a little bit of a shot in the dark is the transportation cost, because it's a little bit difficult to isolate what that really does cost for an individual school, because we share buses across grades spans. But you can see, $730,000 is a big number. I'm going to go back to this. We've got five schools, or excuse me, six schools, that are around the 350 or lower mark, with a couple of exceptions, a little higher, but it's really difficult for us to continue to staff these schools. So you may be asking, how in the heck could you have done this? How could you have allowed this to happen? Well, first of all, most of these schools on this list were built in the last century, okay? We've also seen tremendous shifts in our population in Craven County since the '60s and '70s, when most of our schools were built. The average age of our schools is 1971, and that is based on the very best data we can find, either the plaque on the wall or the Department of Public Instruction information that we have. Some of these schools, again, are old, and so some of the reconstruction or additions on the campuses were not maybe recorded as well as we would have liked. But 1971 is pretty old. So you add to that cost, something that's not going to be presented today, but we hope to engage with the Board of Commissioners on the next several months, and that is the deferred maintenance on these buildings, and also the cost to continue to have them in operation as facilities and buildings, the HVAC, all of the maintenance that we're putting into them. Those work orders have not even entered into this cost. So what does that mean for our school system? What does that mean for really everyone? It means that we're losing some opportunities, right? And so we are trying to do the best we can, and I have spent the last three years, our staff that's sitting back here, our cabinet, if the cabinet members that are here would stand up. These are the folks that have worked tirelessly and to the point of exhaustion trying to analyze every penny in our budget, and I need to commend them in front of the commissioners for the work that we've done over the last several years. Thank you very much. They are combing over every piece of our budget to make sure that what we're putting in front of the commissioners, what we're putting in front of the citizens, is as transparent as it can be, but represents our true cost. But this is one that we cannot get away from until we figure out a way to reorganize some of our facilities and just make some critical decisions about our facilities moving forward. So you should know that the Board of Education is engaged right now with an architect that is conducting a long-range facility plan, master plan for us, and that's work, again, that we would like to engage with the commissioners on in the next several months. So I say $2.1 million, because if you take just half of those schools, for example, and they were not in operation, please do not take from this message that I'm trying to close schools, but I am saying that we've got some difficult decisions to make about how we're going to operate some of our schools, or that specific facilities may or may not be in operation. But it does mean that we're losing the opportunity to realize our vision. This is a vision that our community set for our school system and for our children and for the educators who are responsible for them, to make sure that we're providing the very best resources for our students, giving our teachers the resources to do that work, and making sure that we're engaging the community to make that happen. I also want you to know that our curriculum instruction staff has worked diligently to begin realizing the vision that our community has set. And you can't see this, although it's in your packet, and I encourage you to take some time, not just this evening, but over the next coming days, to really look at this instructional model. There are four major components of that, and that is a rigorous and challenging curriculum, so making sure that the work that we ask students to do represents the work that they're going to do when they get out into the military, the world of work, or they go to college so they can get a job past college. Authentic assessment. Please hear me, folks, this is not multiple-choice assessment, okay? This is work that truly represents an alignment between what our standards say. So if our standards say analyze something, we want kids to be analyzing something. If it tells us to evaluate or distinguish between two concepts, we want our kids to be able to do that. That's not very well done with a multiple-choice assessment. So we're really trying to work to make sure that what's happening in our classrooms is getting students ready for the type of problem-solving they're going to have to do in the work world. Modern learning environments, making sure that students are not sitting in rows Modern learning environments, making sure that students are not sitting in rows anymore doing work independently, because every bit of all of the work that's going on with the people who sit in this room, as well as the folks who sit up here, is collaborative. You cannot do work in isolation. And we've had, for a while, kind of an education system that really kind of focuses on the individual student, and not their ability to work with others. And we are trying to make that transition. And then something I think that this community, as well as our country and our state, are very focused on, is making sure that it's a safe and supportive learning environment. And the goal, which is what you can see in that light bulb, is that we're going to create students or learners, and this includes our teachers as well as our students, that are critical thinkers, and problem solvers, communicators, collaborators, creators and innovators, and civic, culturally and globally-minded citizens. I pray that those two kids that were up here were our kids. I really do.
You are.
Because they are, yes. Because those are the type of activities that our students should also be doing when they're in school. And I want to hopefully remind you that during the storm, many of our students from all of our high schools and middle schools were packed on buses, went out into communities, pulled out muck of people's houses, helped them to rebuild and restore their homes back to some operational order. Our kids wanted to be a part of that, and I think that's something that, as we move forward, focusing on this civic-minded citizen is something that's really important to our school system. I want to, this is a slide that I put in front of the Board of Commissioners last year, but really it summarizes the salary increases, or the wage increases, that our classified staff has seen over the last, really, almost 11 years now. What you'll see here is, last year, the average pay for our classified staff was $25,643 a year. That's not very much. If you can do the math, divide that by 12 months, it's about $2,000. When you take taxes out, you're barely able to support a home, food, clothing, and a car. And many of these folks are the single wage earners in their homes, and they're the ones that are supporting some of our students and our community, for sure. So I want you to also see that we have been able to increase that annual pay this past year, just by making the adjustments of the three employee groups that I showed you earlier. So it's 9.4% higher, even though the state only provided an increase of 2%. We did that within our budget last year, by trying to find efficiency where we could find it, and we've still got work to do. So as we figure out ways to find efficiency, we're going to continue to work on this, and we're obviously going to need some assistance in some of those areas. This is the challenge of our budget in Craven County Schools, and every one of the 115 school districts across the state of North Carolina. We have a constitution that provides for free and appropriate public education for our students, but right now, the funding model is sometimes putting more of the burden on the local leaders. I do want to show you that our teacher turnover has ticked down. I also want to bring your attention to the fact that you'll see the last year listed there is 2017-18. We have finished the 2018-19 year. This data is collected from March to March, March 31st to March 31st. So we finished the next kind of data collection year, we just don't have the data certified yet. I believe that this number will go down, but I can't give you the accurate number yet, and so I don't want to do that. But that is definitely that, hopefully that downward trend is directly related to the work that the Commissioners have done in partnership with us, in improving our supplement. So, we also had some additional challenges, which we will probably have this year. And that is that the Board of Commissioners, by statute, is responsible for, we're responsible for providing our budget to you, the Board of Commissioners is responsible for solidifying their budget by the end of the fiscal year, and the state of North Carolina does not have the same requirements. And so, as last year, I anticipate this year, we will get a state budget potentially way after your and my budget is adopted. The challenge is that, last year, for example, we saw about a 1.13% increase in our retirement rate. Last year, you should know that we projected our retirement rate to be at 18.44, so we did budget for that, but then it came in at 18.86. This year, it's projected to be at 19.57, which is what we're going to budget for, but it could come in different, just like it could come in different for you. We're anticipating about a $305, $306 increase in healthcare costs, that's what we're being told, and we've lost Impact Aid revenue. I do have a little bit of good news, though, here to provide. We just got this data today, so there's a part of this presentation that's a little bit inaccurate, but we got our last, we think it's our last, drop for Impact Aid this year, which brings our revenue higher than we had projected for this year. So that made, we made an adjustment to our revenue in this coming budget for that purpose. So the Board of Education has adopted budget priorities that encompass all three of our budgets, which are federal, state, and local. Approximately 78% of our budget is state funds, 20% is local funds, and the remaining part is federal funds. We have, again, five goals. The learner, which is our student, it's really everyone in our system is a learner. The educator, again, everyone in our system is an educator, that's who's doing the work. And then teaching and learning, community engagement and leadership, and operations and resources. And this is where our priorities for this coming school year fell. So our considerations were the increases in benefits costs that we're projecting for next year. We're asking to increase the teacher supplement this year by half a percent. Last year, you'll remember that we increased it about 1.5% from 7 to 8.5. We're taking a little bit slower increase this year, or requesting a little bit slower increase, again, because of what's happened with the storm. I want to bring some attention to the fact that we're increasing the charter school transfer. And this is something that, in the information that I shared with your staff a couple of days ago, the number was corrected. So we've got 46 of our students that are participating in virtual charter schools. So that means they're sitting at home, and they are taking coursework from virtual charters that are not based in Craven County. They're, in fact, based somewhere else in the state, and I think one of them is actually based outside of the state. Those dollars follow those students. We are trying to work on making those dollars not follow those students, but because those students stay with us. And so we are looking at examining virtual options for our own students. There are reasons that students pick virtual options, but I need you to also hear from me that we want to make sure that there's a teacher behind that virtual option, not just a computer program. And we believe we can do that better. We're also projecting utilities cost increase. One of the things that I said to this Board of Commissioners when I presented our damages in the fall, was that we had had a pretty robust energy management system, trying to keep our energy costs low, but that did not help us necessarily with the humidity levels in our buildings. And so, we're going to have to make some adjustments to our utilities, and we already saw those adjustments kind of impact our bottom line for our fuel costs. And also, property insurance cost increase. Right now, we're projecting $16,000. I will tell you that we do have the option, and we are investigating still, in the process, of not using the Department of Public Instruction for our insurance. You all heard me present at the, in the fall, about how challenging it was to get them to cover the mold remediation and that type of thing. We have, hopefully, a vendor that is going to cover a significant portion of the southeastern part of North Carolina as a group, and will be probably more than this cost, but that's something that we're going to try to work through in our budget. So I do want you to know that that number is actually a little bit in the air, because we're continuing to investigate options. This is a summary of the expense adjustments. The increase in the supplement by half percent is approximately $300,000. Another thing that happened after last year's state budget was approved was a pretty significant pay increase for assistant principals. Of the, I think, 32 assistant principals we had last year, almost 90% of them were still being paid on the teacher salary scale, because they could make more money on that teacher salary scale than they could as assistant principals. That's how off the assistant principal pay scale was. An adjustment was made, but because we pay for so many of our assistant principals, we only get 12, but we have 32, then we have to pay for the difference somehow. Benefits increases, which I've already talked about, an increase in the transfer to charter schools, some of which, most of which is because of the virtual charter increase in enrollment, and then facilities cost. I do want you to know, we're continuing to try to look for efficiencies, particularly at central services. We had to make a switch between the state and the local budgets, because the central office allotment from the state of North Carolina is projected to be lower again this year. And so, we've got to pay for some of that staff, and we've reduced about as much as we can reduce. And so, we've switched one of a lower-cost person to the state fund, because we're only getting a certain amount from the state fund, and moved another to local, and made some other adjustments as well. I want you to hear also that we reclassified a director of operations position, a person that retired, to a director of safety and security. This person will be responsible for all of the safety and security considerations on the school system side, and will be the person who is working with our sheriff's office, city of New Bern police, and city of Havelock, as well as with our school system staff on training, which I'm going to talk a little bit about as well. We're asking for the following revenue adjustments. We did make an increase to our Impact Aid revenue to reflect the receipts we had this year. You can see how we've decreased our Impact Aid over the last several years, but last year, I told you that decrease was about $1 million, because it was at the end of last school year. But now, because of the receipts we've had this year, it's not nearly as low, so that's good news. We're appropriating approximately $550,000 in fund balance, and asking for $775 from Craven County. Just a note that we want to make sure that folks remember that we moved the lease amount for our iPads into our capital outlay expenditure, so that doesn't represent an increase, it just represents the fact that we moved that money into our capital outlay request, and took it out of our local current expense. You can see our capital outlay budget request. Mr. White and I have been talking about our progress, and what we're trying to accomplish with the long-range master plan, and instead of making some significant adjustments or improvements on some of our campuses, we're trying to wait until we see what the significant priorities are, before we add those projects into the capital outlay request. And so as a result, we focus very heavily in our capital outlay. One, on replacing a gym floor, that's a school that we're going to continue to use, West Craven High School. And then on safety considerations, which you'll see primarily in the category-two product, our projects. Upgrading our camera systems on our buses, which is a significant safety challenge, and also increasing the, and improving the camera systems in our buildings. Everything else really there is, and adding a bus and some mowers that are sorely needed and have not been purchased in the past. Safety. I mentioned that we are adding a director of safety and security. This is through some efficiency and through that reclassification. That salary and benefits, we're trying to make sure that we can hire someone who is sufficiently qualified, has the expertise in safety and security, and pay their benefits as well. Just as a comparison, county government has a retirement rate contribution that's somewhere around 9.5%. Ours is 19.44%. So there's, that's a big difference in the amount of benefits that we pay. Alice Training is something that's been ongoing. Our partner with the sheriff's office, the New Bern police, and Havelock police, as well as all of our municipalities, have been engaged, and we have been providing training to them, and opening our training to those police officers as well, and our law enforcement partners. Our goal is to increase school resource officers, and you'll notice, or maybe note, that we do not have a specific request in the budget for this. And that is because we are promised, and I think the Commissioners were involved in a meeting where there was a promise of additional resource officers being added to our state allotment. We obviously will not know that until the state budget is approved, and so we're going to continue to keep our eye on that. And our goal is to work towards improving and increasing the number of resource officers over time, hopefully with the goal of, by the 2024 year, having an officer in each of our schools. But we recognize that's a significant personnel cost, and it's not just personnel costs, you all know probably better than I do, it's equipment, training, workers' comp, and benefits and salaries as well. Just a comparison of the local current expense over the last several years. Again, this asterisk just represents the fact that we moved our, some money from local current expense into our capital outlay to make up for the lease that we're paying, so that's really a wash. And you can see the breakdown of the request from the county specifically, in capital outlay, and county appropriation, and then what we are projecting to appropriate from our fund balance. And this last slide really just summarizes the efficiencies that we've tried to attain over the last several years, to include reducing central services administrator positions, reclassifying down positions from assistant superintendent to directors, and we've had to, over time, eliminate positions to make sure that we can, one, meet the requirements of our local budget funding, but also the state impact that has resulted from our loss of students. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time from the Commissioners.
Any questions? Anything? Anybody? Anybody? Dr. I want to thank you. I think personally, you've painted a rosy picture. I think there's more out there that you, that needed to be talked about, and I understand where you're coming from, where we've got a tough year. But I think the community needs to be aware that we've got an $85 million backlog on maintenance to bring our schools up to date. Are we going to make you whole on that? No. But we've got a lot of problems, and we've got a old, a lot of old schools on that. So I thank you for what you've done, and I appreciate for what you come forward.
I have one question. Going back on your paying for average annual pay, that's now up to $28,000.
Yes, the classified staff?
Two questions. What is the eastern North Carolina average, and what is the state of North Carolina average?
I do not know, but I will get those numbers for you. It's kind of difficult, because we pull that directly from our payroll file, but we, I can see if we can get some information for you.
Any, yes, sir.
Dr. Doyle, I want to, I have a real interest, excuse me, in the, your discussion about the age of our facility and the utilization of the facility. Are you and your board going to give us your thoughts on, obviously not this year, but where do we go with that?
Yes.
You're going to be giving us that.
Yes, and we want to engage the Commissioners in some of that dialogue and discussion. Obviously, it's the Board of Education's job to make a proposal, and to decide on what the long-range master plan should look like. But we're only going to be successful if we engage our community, as well as our Commissioners, who is, you know, capital funding is the responsibility of the local county Commissioners in that discussion.
Is this, am I correct that there's a state bond issue that's going to be coming? Will that tie into that, or is that going to be for the current facilities? How, what can you tell me about that?
So if there's, if there were a bond passed, Craven County, from what I can gather from the most recent proposal, would stand to gain somewhere around $9 million, which unfortunately would not touch the deferred maintenance that Chairman Liner referenced. But it, at this point, every little bit will assist us. So it would help us to kind of begin some of the work that needs to be done. Quite frankly, some of it would be just basic security upgrades. But then it would also help us to begin making an impact in some significant ways on some campuses.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Dr. again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, I appreciate it.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Craven Community College Budget Presentation, Dr. Raymond Stetson.
Oh, good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman. I have with me today our Chair of our Board of Trustees, Mr. Bill Taylor. He's completing his second term with us as Chair. And I'll introduce the gentleman behind us, behind me. He's new to this venue, but not new to the college, and I'll speak a little more. I'd like to begin, as always, by saying thank you. It never, never, never takes a year that we've ever forget that the college owes a deep debt of gratitude to the county for its continuing support. The county accounts for about 17% of our annual budget, and as I go through, you'll see the impact that that has had on our college through the years. It's been a busy year in the infrastructure area. We, last month, finally cut the ribbon on our first stop. That is on the first floor of Barker Hall. And what's significant about that is, the first stop is exactly what its name implies. That is where students go on their first day on campus, and for the first time in the college's history, the first stop is located at the front of the campus where it belongs. And we've consolidated a lot of functions, and I'll let Mr. Millard give you a few more details on what that entails here later on. The Volt Center, I know, is near and dear to everyone's heart, and I'm pleased to report that we start moving in furniture tomorrow. We are there. And we expect our first students to begin taking classes in the facility before the end of the month. There's still a lot of construction going on on that multi-acre site, so we'll be ramping up over the course of the summer, but we will defer our formal ribbon cutting until it looks a little more finished out and around the campus there. But we are very pleased to have that running. The STEM building on the The STEM building on the Havlock campus is about 40% complete. It is running on time with an expected occupancy in October, and again, I'll let Jim talk a little more about the particulars of that facility, but we're very pleased, and that will effectively complete the Havlock campus. We'll actually have a quadrangle on that campus, and we're really looking forward to that. And again, Jim will talk a little more about what's going to be in that building. This past year, we inaugurated two brand-new associate and applied science programs, industrial systems technology, and mechatronics engineering technology. Both of these programs are very closely related to industry, industry needs, particularly out in our industrial park with our large employers, Bosch, Mowen, and then on the eastern end of the county with the base. No talk of last year would be complete, unfortunately, without talking about the hurricane. Dr. Doyle mentioned the personal impact it had. We have about 235 full-time employees on the college. Twenty-eight of them lost their homes in their entirety, including my own assistant, who just this past weekend finally moved back into her property, albeit her garage. That is where we stand with the human impact over the last year. We have 10 buildings on the main campus. All of them had lights on during the storm. We were off the grid, thanks to a wonderful partnership we have with the City of New Bern. We go off-grid and on generator during times of major storms. But interestingly, four of the buildings were occupied all the way through the storm. Bender Hall had the New Bern Police Department in it. The Student Center had our security and maintenance team taking care of challenges as they took place. We had Public Radio East and a television station in Barker Hall, and we had the American Red Cross housed in the AMC. So, we were busy all the way through the storm. The only major damage that we did incur was the hangar roof out on the Havlock campus, about $350,000 worth of damage. It is insured. As of today, the pre-bid is complete, and we expect a bid opening here in the next few weeks, and the plan is to complete that work from the outside in so that we have a roof intact before we have, hopefully not, but before the possibility of another storm coming in on us this fall. Our foundations, we have two here at the college, the Craven Community College Foundation and the Public Radio East Foundation. We have four drives every year, of course, the Ninth Annual Community Fabric Awards, and again, thank you to the City of Havlock, who stepped up this year with the Travel and Tourist Center while the New Bern Convention Center was closed, and we had some wonderful award winners, Jerome, Mr. Steve Tyson, Chef Boyd, and Kate Emerson were very well-deserving recipients. What I want to note about all four of these foundation campaigns that took place this year, each of them individually and collectively beat their 2018 fundraising totals for this coming year. That says a tremendous amount about the college and the Craven County community, who opened up their wallets, and for those that were unable to give this past year due to their own circumstances, there were plenty of other folks that stepped up and served our students, and we are, again, very, very grateful. Enrollment, in some cases, are the victim of your own success. We're in about the ninth year of economic expansion in the United States, and community colleges tend to track downward in their enrollment during those good times. As you see from the chart, system-wide, the North Carolina Community College system has seen about 17.4% of its enrollment erode over the last seven years, and our college is tracking right with it, although I will say, we were ahead of the ballgame up until this last year. Those two blocks that you see, the red block is what we have been able to document as lost students by name, about 71 full-time equivalents, that we have been able to name students that did not come back specifically because they lost homes or left the area. That orange area is kind of an artificial piece. We were the recipient gratefully from the North Carolina Legislature of emergency aid grants that I'll talk a little more in a few minutes. Actually, I'll talk about that now. $408,000 worth of grants that were given to our students. We were allowed to award $1,250 per semester for the fall, spring, and summer. We didn't know if we'd get that many takers for that much money. Call it good or bad news, but we will have expended all of that money in the next two weeks, so our students needed it desperately. But that orange block is where we would have seen the enrollment had that not taken place. Knowing that we were sitting equal with the system, I dived a little further, our team did, and looked at some different pieces. We are behind the system average in our curriculum enrollments, those are our traditional degree programs, as well as our basic skills, but that chart on your left is a comparison of us to the system for workforce development. That has been where Craven Community College has been growing exponentially in the last decade. And the line on the white is the overall enrollment, and you can see, we were tracking ahead of the system until this past year, thanks to a little hurricane. What that means for us is, in the big picture, is our enrollment is diversifying tremendously as we lose some enrollments in math and English and the sciences. We are picking up enrollments in industrial technology, in welding, in automotive, in 3D printing, and some of those dramatic programs that are necessary to keep our folks at work. One bright spot in our curriculum enrollment is our relationship with Craven County Schools and the Career and College Promise Program. We track since academic year 15 and what we call unduplicated headcount, which is a physical count of bodies that we are serving, whether they register for one, two, or three semesters, regardless of the number of credits. We serve 96 head in academic year 15, but in the current year, that is now 512 students that we have served, a growth of 500%. What that means for the college in terms of its full-time equivalent funding is the share of funding that we receive as a result of these students has grown from 1.1% to 7.3%. That is on top of the 8% that we currently receive by virtue of our early colleges. So, as you can see, our relationship with the Craven County School System begins, continues to enroll, grow in importance every year, and that is what has sustained our curriculum enrollment over the last few years. The college thrives on partnerships. It is said that community colleges are the workforce development engine, and in this case, it is the partnerships that are driving that success. We are the prime source for five-star nurses at Carolina East Hospital, and this year, thanks to a grant from the hospital of $150,000 over two years, we will be able to hire an additional faculty member and increase the size of the incoming nursing cohort from 40 students to 56 students. This fall, we start our FRC East apprenticeship. If you are one of those folks at Peru's USA Jobs, you know they are hiring 40 to 75 new entry-level technicians for FRC East as they begin to ramp up for the F-35. We expect at least 40 of those students will be enrolled at Craven Community College as full-time apprentices, taking 18 credit hours of curriculum courses and 358 contact hours of workforce development courses. We are in partnership with Trade Wind Aviation, and my friend Andy Shorter will tell you, our nation is desperately short of pilots. This is Craven Community College's contribution to that. This is a $47,000 per student program that we're in partnership with Trade Wind Aviation. We have had 21 students take flight physicals, and nine are fully enrolled for this fall, so we're off to a great start there. Partnership with the New Bern, City of New Bern Fire Department graduated its first fire academy. That is an 18-week course. The 14 graduates included one active-duty Marine, who will be staying here in the local area because he's already hired. Our Bosch apprenticeship program continues to grow, and last year, we instituted a manufacturing pathway program. That is a 96 contact hour program that prep students for work in the manufacturing industry. As you may have heard from our industry leaders, they may interview 100, hire 10, keep 1. This program is designed to take some of the pressure off of that, as well as the temp agencies. We've graduated 37 students, and most of them are still with Bosch. We also continue to work with students that are transitioning from active duty and reserve status from Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point, and that is with our Tools for Advanced Manufacturing Program, which we graduated 49 students this year to help them make the transition from military life to civilian life, and hopefully have a few of them stay in the local area in the forthcoming year. And then finally, over at the right, to the Volt Center, five new programs will be either expanding or standing up here in the next few months. As I move to the next slide, I want to take a moment now to introduce our new Chief Finance Officer for the college. His name is Mr. Jim Millard. He's new to you, but not new to us. He is a retired Marine Corps Chief War Officer in a Personnel Office, has been with the college off and on for two, since 2000, took a little sabbatical from us for a couple years. You may have recognized him from his six years of service as the Dean of Career and Technical Programs, and he has just finished his sixth month as our Chief Finance Officer, and I could not have asked for a better successor to Dr. Varnell, who served the college faithfully in that role for six years herself. Mr. Millard.
Good evening, Chairman Liner, Vice Chairman Mark, and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I am going to talk a little bit about some of the things we've got going on at the college, some of the projects that we have just finished, some of the projects that we have been planning, and some of the projects that we are still working on. And I'll start with those that we're still working on.
So, you heard Dr. Stacks talk about the STEM building. Very, very excited about this. We got the notice receipt on December 3 of last year. With that, I'm going to knock on wood, because as of right now, we are still on track to finish when we're supposed to, which is in the latter part of October. October 20 is the date. This is a 15,000-square-foot facility. It'll have eight classrooms, at least four of them will be set up to be flexible so that we can change the size if we need to. We'll have two for NC State and two for Early College. The picture that you see there about the roof, and that's kind of a diagram of what it should look like, but that roof is changing so fast, if you happen to go by the Havlock campus, you'll notice that it doesn't look like that already. It's changing very, very quickly. The weather's been pretty good to us, so right now, the roof decking is about 40% complete already. The steel joists are about 65% complete, and the steel structure is about 90% complete. So, it's just moving right along. Of course, we'll get to that point where it won't look like it's advancing as fast, but we're there now. The next one is the Academic Support Center. I heard Dr. Stacks talk about the new first stop. This is the 2,500-square-foot area that they first stopped vacated. That is going to be kind of basically refurbished, and we're going to make it more of a flexible space. We're going to move things like tutoring, supplemental instruction, academic counseling, and some peer mentoring and other things in there. And again, it will be designed with the idea of flexibility in there. The architect's already been selected, and we will be looking for an estimated bid date somewhere, somewhere in January of '20. Also, I heard Dr. Stacks talk about the Volt. We're very excited. We will be moving, installing our furniture in there starting tomorrow and over the next couple of days. This is a 7,500-square-foot facility, four classrooms, flexible labs. We have a very large classroom and a conference room, and again, very excited about getting down there. Construction, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, small injury repair are the items, are the particular classes that'll be moving down there first. Also spoke about the ribbon cutting April 16. Probably the biggest thing I want to say about this is, if you could have seen the faces, and Dr. Stacks and I have talked about it several times, you've never seen anybody work so hard to move into an area and not have anything with smiles on their faces. They were so excited, the team at Craven, moving into that new facility. They'd waited a very long time to finally get in there. They're in there, they're having a great time, and here's the big thing. Everything I've heard, and I talk to people all the time over there, students, guests, staff, faculty, every person I've spoke to is absolutely amazed at what's taken place over there. This is a very, very good, you know, reconstruction, and it's very efficient. You have everything in one place. It kind of tracks all the way down from the minute you come through the door till you're paying on the other end. Very, very efficient, very effective, and nothing but very good comments that are coming from that. Talk about the grounds a little bit. If you've been over there lately, you've probably seen a very big transition going on. We've talked about it recently in a couple of different events. The campus kind of transitions over time at this time of the year, preparing for graduation. We've got the new plants going in, things like that. One of the things that we've done over the past year is new walkway lights, so a lot of the lights, some of them have been there for 50 years. So, we've replaced all the lights, and what we're going with is an LED light. It decreases our overall energy cost down the road, so most of the lights you will see over there now are being changed over to that. We've also fixed a lot of the sidewalks, created some new areas with sidewalks, and put in the roundabouts. Now, the roundabouts add additional seating. It makes kind of like a nice little place for students to kind of gather and sit down and just kind of talk with one another, and it's also the centerpiece for some of our new sculptures that have been donated to the campus. Other improvements, and these are under what we'd like, like to look at as preventative and sustained maintenance. It's always a lot better if you can stay on top of it and stay ahead of it than it is to go back and try to fix it once it's gotten to a really bad point. So, in accordance with our plan, we're continuing to resurface parking lots, repainting them up. We're also working, looking at the parking lots in Havlock, they've been done as well. So, we've done five and six in New Bern this year, also parking lot warrant all entrances, and we will continue to do that in accordance with our plan that we've already established. These are some of the things that we've done inside. You're looking at two photos, before and afters. You're looking at the automotive shop, and you're also looking at, on the next slide, by the way, you'll look at the hangar deck, and both of them follow the same thing. Again, preventive and sustained maintenance. It's more cost-effective to do it that way. We're staying on top of it, and we are, we are noticing that it is working that way. As long as we stay ahead of it, we're, we're going to be much better off. They blasted and resealed all the floors over there, and I can tell you, as the former dean for, for that area, this is something that we've needed for a long time, very happy to see it get done. It, it, it's not just a cosmetic thing or an aesthetics thing. Doing this also, the floors, yes, it looks professional, and that's great, but it also helps trying to keep them clean, trying to keep the stuff off the floor. You're talking about oil and, and other, you know, solvents that are going down there. It's hard to keep that clean when the floor is all chipped up and you have a lot of paint missing and things like that. So, it's more than just aesthetics. It helps keep it clean, it helps maintain safety, better for the equipment, and overall, it does look professional. And again, we've done the same thing for the hangar deck at the IET Building in Havlock. Then, security and IT upgrades. We have a crisis response team over on the campus, and we train a lot. We train at least once a month. We involve first responders from around the county. We make sure that we are learning to communicate with one another, so heaven forbid, in the event that anything does in fact happen, we have at least a better idea of how we're going to communicate with one another. So, in fact, we have a training session coming up, or training exercise coming up May 17, and we'll have everybody involved with that, from, from the hospital, to all of our first responders. We even have some folks from outside the county that are coming in to witness and see what we're doing. We do this a lot. While we're doing it, we have a chance to see things that we don't normally see. We walk around in groups, and we're looking, and some of the things that we discovered this past year was, there weren't very many, but there were some gaps in camera coverage. So, there's this, a few places that while we're looking at all these cameras we've got, we've got a few places that we could not, in fact, cover. So, we're adding a few more cameras, upgrading our ENS emergency notification system, different door controllers, that'll make things a little bit better for that. But altogether, right now, we have 192 cameras on campus. With the Volt coming online, we'll be adding 10 more cameras down there so we can help monitor that from the campus down here, at, at the main campus. So, these are things that we're doing. Like I said, it's, it's very good for all of us to work together with, like I said, our local first responders, hospitals, and things like that. So, just trying to make sure that we're as prepared as we possibly could be in the event of a situation. In the five-year facilities plan, as I was stating earlier, this preventive and sustained maintenance plan is working. It is cost-effective, it is efficient. We have 14 buildings. Three of them are scheduled to be refurbished. Every one of them has roofs. The roofs need to be maintained, otherwise they can get away from us, and it'll cost us even more to repair them. So, big-ticket items on the five-year plan for 2020 are our parking lots, our roads, our roofs. That's probably the biggest one, but we also have those other renovations going on. Any questions for me before I turn it back over to Dr. Stacks?
Yes, sir, I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to the Volt Center.
Volt Center, yes, ma'am.
Number one, I appreciate and congratulate Craven Community College for its focus on the trades. College is college. It does not matter if it is four years or if it is two years. If it gives a BA in English, not a whole lot of demand, or a, or creates an electrician that can get a job yesterday.
Yes, ma'am.
And in the wake of Hurricane Florence, one of our big housing issues is we don't have enough bodies and hands to work on. Many cases, it's not, there's money, there's insurance money, there's nobody to work on. Okay, so my question is, in the lessons learned for this area after Florence, we need more trades. Are you ramping up those programs to produce more? Are you ramping up those programs to produce more of those trades? Do you have the flexibility in the system, if you enroll 50, but you've got another 25 sitting there who would like the place, do you have that flexibility to do this?
In the design of the Vault Center, we designed it as a flexible space with five initial programs, and there's always the question, if you build it, will they come? And the answer to that is, if they don't come, then we'll pivot to other programs. Masonry is next on our list. I don't have enough space at the moment. I either need to get more space or pivot out one of the programs. Those programs will keep coming. Diesel and large machinery, heavy equipment operations are also in our queue. Hospitality management is in our queue. As you saw on that chart, we're growing in leaps and bounds. I'll throw that chart back up. We're growing in leaps and bounds in workforce development, and we know it's not fast enough. But these programs are resource-intensive, space-intensive, and that's what we're working on. But the Vault Center is a partial solution to that. That's fair.
And second question is, I think there is a gap in knowledge in the general public over this two-year degree or this certificate program sets you up to be hired the day after you graduate.
Absolutely.
As opposed to go schlep for a job and hope you get lucky.
That's correct.
Okay, that's a marketing expense in terms of letting people in the public, letting school counselors, letting parents, letting, Maureen's getting out of Cherry Point, know if you go into HVAC, you've got a job waiting for you. Does your budget or does your plan include getting that information more widely assimilated into the public space? Because I think it's critical. If you don't know this is a good program to get hired out of, you don't know, maybe I should be looking at it.
We do. In fact, we're just in the process of completing up a new marketing plan that we will kick off at our Board of Trustees Retreat in June, but it does not have an added budget to it. We are constrained within our current budget. But a lot of it is me jumping on my soapbox and my team jumping up on our soapbox and talking about college for all being distinguished from university for all. There is a difference. Almost every student graduating from high school requires some level of education at the post-secondary level. Almost all of that can be offered at the community college or the university. About 70% of the workforce needs a credential above the high school diploma, up to and including the associate degree. Unfortunately, more than half of those graduates are going to university, at about a two-to-one ratio. And that creates a struggle at the other end. We have approximately 9% of community college students already possess a baccalaureate degree.
So, but make sure, I understand what I think you said. You do not have money to market that information to the public audience included in your budget?
We do not have an additional add on top of what we already have. We are redirecting resources internally to push that off.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
As I said, in our reentry, in our reentry program, that we have a city and kind of working together to do trades. And from what I can understand, they're working on that educational building now, like going over Prama, and it should be up and running pretty soon. And this going, make sure we have carbon, electrician, all types of trade, because lack of, our commissioner said, in this last storm, we couldn't fit everybody to work. And we still can, because we have a lot of people that's not even began to get their places fixed up. We've got people living in the cemetery, we've got people living on the, under the bridges, we've got people living in the streets. So this is really needed, no doubt about it.
Yep.
Dr. Stas, let me ask you one thing, make sure everybody understands or is aware, especially the public. What is the five areas that you're gonna, when you open up the Vault Center, what are the five projects that's gonna start, kick off?
Sure. HVAC, construction technology, electrical technology, plumbing, and small engine repair.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Let me get to the bottom line. This is the budget request that we're making for the county. We begin, of course, with last year's baseline at just under $3.6 million. Add to that our personnel requests. That is driven almost exclusively by retirement system contributions mandated by the state of North Carolina and the increased cost of health insurance. Recall in FY '19, 50% of the Vault Center's operations were funded. For FY '20, we're requesting the other half of that allocation. And with the STEM building opening up in October, we're asking for 2/3 of the $124,000 allocation we had spoke of before. Because the Vault Center did not open in January, as we originally projected a year ago in May, we are, we have banked that money, and so that is being returned to the budget to give us an operating allocation request of $3.761 million. And then the capital allocation, which has remained fixed, this is funding our five-year maintenance plan, and I am very pleased to report that our current deferred maintenance total is zero. And we are exceptionally grateful for that. And that five-year plan is what's driving that. For a total request of $4.261 million, and by reference, our allocation from the state of North Carolina is about $19 million. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Board, is there any questions? Dr. Stas, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Jim, thanks a lot, sir. Okay, if there's anyone from the school board or the college board that's here that would like to leave, I'll give you about two minutes, if you so desire. But I thank you for being here.
Yes.
Ms. Noem, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Liner.
Good evening, Chairman Liner, how are you?
Good.
Vice Chairman Mark, Commissioners, nice to be with you all tonight. So, I'm just going to speak briefly a little bit, although many of you know about what JCPCs do. I'm just going to speak briefly about what they've been doing since the late 1990s, and that is providing community-based alternatives for our juveniles in an effort to try and keep them on the straight and narrow and keep them out of the juvenile court system. So, we provide a number of different community-based programs and do so with state dollars that come through to you all, and the county serves as a fiscal agent for all those state funds. So, that's the reason that our funds remain at the number that you see in your packet. That's the number that has been in the state budget allocated for a county of our size for the last nine years. And there was some effort, as I understand it, on the part of the Department of Public Safety to increase that number, given Raise the Age, which will be phased in in December of this year. But, just as Dr. Doyle was suggesting with the school board, we don't know if that money will materialize or not in the state budget, so we're just dealing with what we know we will, we will have at this point. So, I do want to reiterate, though, the importance of JCPCs because the community-based programs that we do offer, the bottom line that the county saves in terms of dollars is $122 a day for every day that a juvenile would spend in a juvenile detention center. So, to the extent that we are keeping them out of the system, it is a benefit to the county financially, to the bottom line, and also to the lives of these kids. We have had, over the years that JCPCs have been in place, state statistics indicate that since 1998, our various intermediate sanctions and early intervention programs have helped make possible an 86.25% reduction in youth served by youth development centers, which would be a very expensive enterprise. Kids who end up in such facilities, that cost is over, well over $100,000 a year. So, this has been a huge savings in that regard. So, all of our programs are here tonight. I have representatives, but we have four that operate in Craven County. The Area Day Reporting Center, which provides an opportunity for our long-term suspended kids from the school system to continue pursuing their studies while they are suspended, and it provides them a safe place to go and work. And we have ongoing relationships with the New Bern Police Department, regularly visits with the students, and they have a number of regular adult figures in the lives that they're able to see daily there. And then through the Eastern Carolina Mediation Center, we provide teen court, restitution program, and then also a parent and family skill-building service, which is called Family Connections. And the benefit of that is that that program is able to get to some of these youths who would, are referred by our juvenile court counselors and would not otherwise qualify for any kind of counseling assistance through Medicaid or any other governmental program. So we're able to hopefully intervene with those kids early and try and get them some assistance that might be helpful at getting their, their lives on track and having them not, you know, penetrate further into the juvenile court system. So with that, I am happy to take any questions. You'll see that the numbers are very much allocated in the way that they were last year.
Board, any questions?
Ms. Dacey.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that these were state funds that came to us.
Correct.
So that, basically, we're just holding that money to give to you at a future date.
Correct, that is correct.
So we'd have nothing to do, basically, with our budget as far as tax dollars.
That is correct.
Right, thank you.
Yes. That is correct. I did also hand out to you a flyer that I wanted to draw your attention to. One of the things that former Supreme Court Justice Mark Martin, he did a number of things, as you all might recall, he did a number of initiatives. One of them was Raise the Age, which is coming to fruition here in December. The other was school justice partnerships. And that is the, sort of, the result of a discussion that you, I'm sure, have heard in all of your commissioners' meetings about the school-to-prison pipeline. So, the effort with the school justice partnership is to have our school system work closely with our school resource officers and, to the extent possible, divert kids so that if they don't have to get a record, we can avoid that. Because we all know what happens when we, when we end up with a record early on. It makes it more challenging for them to pursue their education and to qualify for various job opportunities, and a whole host of other complications arise in their lives. So, the school justice partnership is basically getting kicked off here. Judge Mills is spearheading that effort. He couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted to let you know that we are moving forward and working on that, and that is, that is something that we're doing collaboratively. Many, many of the folks involved in JCPC, the sheriff, Trillium, juvenile court counselors, a whole host of other people will be involved in that effort. And so, to the extent that JCPC can assist in that, we will be doing so. And so our kickoff meeting for that is June 11th over at the county's Emergency Management Center. So, we will be kicking that off, and all of the relevant stakeholders will be there, including Greg Singleton from the reentry council. So, we're going to try and cover the full gamut.
I think we all got a personal invite.
Good.
I know I got mine last week, so we all should have gotten from the judge on the level.
Terrific. And the judge who's visiting with us is Judge Corpening from New Hanover County, who has really been spearheading a lot of various efforts in that area and is sort of the mastermind behind, behind doing the school justice partnership. So, just wanted to keep you all aware of that.
Any other questions?
Chairman, I'd like to say that, of course, if I made a motion, that we would fund the GTTPA program, because I've been working in this field even before teen court was started, and I tell you, it has saved the county a lot of money. We can count in the millions of dollars that it has saved the county. Because, one thing, right now, this same program has, they're working out in the jail now, and when it's coming in the jail, they're going to train these women, so when they, when they do get out of jail, they'll be able to go to work, have a job, and go to work. So this is a program that's not only standing still, but it's raising the bar for everybody and it's saving the taxpayers a lot of money. So if ever been a program like this needed, it's still needed. Ain't no doubt about it. But the small amount of money that we are spending on this JCPC, we just don't understand how much we are saving the taxpayers.
That's right.
So, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I do. Ms. Dacey, would you mind explaining to this audience and to the people at home, this cost that you have here is nine years old, and what the state has done to this program by taking it from 16 to 18, the added people.
Right, right.
Expecting you to continue to do until we find out exactly. So could you explain that a little bit more so that people are aware?
Right, sure. So, obviously, we're expecting that we will need to serve an additional juvenile population because when the age was raised from 16 to 18, there's going to be essentially folks shifting who were in the adult system over to the juvenile system. So, those numbers are really sort of unknown to us at this point, but the expectation that DPS has is that they would certainly like to do other things in terms of programming for older juveniles. One of the things that, in that 16 to 18-year-old range, one of the things that they have looked at, for instance, is a construction program, which seems like a great idea, particularly given that we have a great new place to do it. So, you know, there are, there are ways of thinking a little bit differently with that population, and that's the understanding. But, yes, the number, the number that I have is the same right now, and it's unclear whether or not there will be any additional funding. So, that, that is going to be a consideration going forward. If we don't have others, what are, what might we do differently, given the change in the population?
Ma'am, thank you. Any other? All right. Have a motion and a second on the table. No further discussion. Bottom clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Yes. Ma'am, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, next on the agenda, Trillium Health Resources, Hurricane Florence update of Hope for NC and Back at Home initiatives. Cindy Erle.
Ellers. Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Liner, Vice Chairman Mark, and Commissioners, for having me here tonight. I would like to, on behalf of Trillium, talk to you a little bit about what our efforts were for the population in Craven County who have mental health, developmental disabilities, and addiction needs in terms of response to the storm, and then talk about two of the initiatives that we are doing here for the state, Hope for NC and Back at Home. First of all, it's my privilege to be here tonight. I really appreciate this opportunity. I'm actually a Craven County resident, have lived here for the last 15 years. Even though I do work in our corporate headquarters up in Greenville, I have been a part of the system for over 25 years as a public servant in the, in the mental health, developmental disability, and substance abuse treatment arena. So I just wanted to share that with you a little bit. So, I just wanted to share that with you a little bit. We have lots of employees who actually live in Craven County, even though we don't have an office here, some of who are in the room tonight that you know. So, I want to just let you know this because a lot of times, because Trillium does cover 26 counties in eastern North Carolina, from the Virginia line to the South Carolina border, meeting the needs of this specific population of individuals with developmental disabilities, mental illness, and addiction, a lot of times, counties aren't really aware of all that we do in the county to meet the needs of these populations. For those of you like Commissioner Sampson, who's been on the board a long time, we used to be new center back here over at the St. Luke's Building where Juvenile Justice is right now. And over many consolidations, over many years, we have become Trillium, all of which have been dictated by the North Carolina State Legislature as part of reforming the Medicaid Mental Health or Behavioral Health System. So, I just want to point that out to you all. Every time a storm comes, this time it happened to be Florence, there have been many in my career, we have to get together the resources to help this very vulnerable population manage to deal with the storm. Because a lot of our folks with developmental disabilities or mental illness don't have that capacity to do that on their own. Their families may not have the capacity to help them evacuate, and right here in your community have quite a few group homes where folks are housed with developmental disabilities and mental health issues. And so, we work to help those folks prepare for storms and then make appropriate evacuation plans. In addition to that, I know that it is no secret to this Board of Commissioners that there is an opiate crisis here among us, and individuals who have addiction to opiates also need their medication-assisted treatment that is provided here in this community by Port Human Services. And we have to make sure, so they don't relapse and go back to using those drugs, that they're able to get that medication in a timely manner. So, we make all of those arrangements before a storm ever hits. But you may not know that that's something we're doing here in your community because we're not in the news about doing it, right? We're just going about our business, helping the citizens of your county get ready for storms. We help people with mental health issues get access to their medication as well because oftentimes after storms, it's going to be hard for people to access medication. They may not be able to get out of their community, they may have flooding, or they may just not have the resources anymore. So, we do initiate this type of activity. In fact, Trillium has about 300 employees that work on this alone in the eastern part of the state, working to help make sure that these populations are covered. We have over 500 employees at Trillium, and this 300 represents most of our clinical staff who are working to secure good preparation before a storm for this population. Our effort is to try to make sure that the folks that we serve or that are known to us don't end up in the community shelters, because it's really not the best place for them. A lot of oftentimes, their needs exceed what you can do in a shelter. So, we do work on that. When we roll over into the actual storm, while Trillium today, because we do not deliver services, we're much more like an insurance company for Medicaid and individuals who have no insurance in the community. We do operate during the storm, throughout the entire storm, emergency operations center ourselves. This operations center is a telephonic call center that responds when first responders are not responding to individuals who may be suicidal, or who may be having panic attack or anxiety over the storm, who also suffer from mental health conditions or addiction or developmental disabilities. We become the lifeline for many people just during the few days, 10 days of emergency operations. We fielded 913 calls from people with mental health issues, addictions, or developmental disabilities, seeking support from Trillium during that 10-day window. That's an exorbitantly high number of calls. Now, that's from not just Craven County, of course, that's from all of the counties that were being impacted by Florence. But for many people, we were the lifeline between being here today and suicide. And so, we spent a lot of time with folks on the phone, helping de-escalate situations or just anxiety about the storm, when law enforcement or EMS or our mobile crisis system wasn't able to respond because it was too dangerous to go out on the roads. In addition, during the storm, we staffed this call center with our senior staff. I myself was on call. While I did evacuate Craven County, I was in Richmond, managed to, through our technology, continue to be on call. And I did field a call I want to share with you tonight, because we know, if we live here in these communities, these storms, it takes a long time, and we've heard that tonight from the school system, we've certainly heard it from the college. The impact is great here in Craven County. There were two gentlemen that ended up at one of the shelters here. I won't say who they are, but they were evacuated from their home, they ended up at a shelter. They were both non-verbal, had autism, and a myriad of other health conditions. Trillium worked in partnership with the EMS that manned the shelter, the Craven Emergency Operations Center, and the Department of Social Service to get those two gentlemen transported from the shelter over to RHA River Bend, which is not a shelter, but was willing to take them in because, as you all know, in this community, RHA River Bend speaks their language, right? So, those two gentlemen went there. As circumstances would have it, they weren't able to return to their home, like a lot of people here in Craven County. But they're also unable to take care of their own needs. Last week, they got back in a home of their own, in an apartment. So, definitely a success story. RHA River Bend kept them safe and healthy during this last seven months, since the storm ended. And those are the kinds of things that Trillium provides to your community. A lot of times, you might not be aware that we do here. But just to let you know, that's something that we do in partnership, also with DSS around a lot of these members. Just to tell you a couple of other things that we did during the storm and after the storm, we did provide some resource lists for all the people. We kept in contact with lots of the folks who get services through our providers here in the agency. We provided food and housing and clothing, medication, supplies like diapers and formula for people who have significant medical needs, who have developmental disabilities. We provided over $30,000 in donated food and clothing and hygiene and comfort items through all of our members that were displaced in this effort for Florence. These are folks that you didn't see in the shelter or hear anybody complaining about because we were here taking care of them. And I just want to point that out because a lot of times, we don't tell anybody what we do, and then people don't think we're doing anything. And so, we did do quite a bit of things in response to the Florence and its aftermath. Just for this specific population, because our focus is on people with mental illness, children and adults with developmental disabilities, and people who struggle with addiction. In addition to that, we did provide grants to the public school systems called Blooming Again. These were really focused on those self-contained classrooms, those special needs kids, for their classrooms to get reconstructed. We did grants with teachers. We also had some of our partner entities donate, throughout the state, donate backpacks full of school supplies that went straight to children here in Craven County. And then the state asked us to help them with an initiative that they started called Back at Home. And so, I'm going to ask Amy Modlin, who's the Director of Housing at Trillium, and I know the minister, I think, has since left, but was talking about housing. We've been working very closely with a lot of agencies here on housing. So, I'm going to ask Amy to come up and just talk a little bit about Back at Home and give you some information, because this is a real critical issue here in Craven County.
Amy?
Yeah, I thought it was very appropriate that he said it didn't matter, the Reverend said it didn't matter how many resources you had to pay rent and get people in their places if you don't have the places to put them into. And that's what we're running into again and again with our Back at Home program. I've been doing housing a long time, and I used to think, gosh, if I could just have this big pot of money to help people get into housing, that would be the perfect thing. But we're finding out, it's not so much. So, just to give you a brief overview of Back at Home, Trillium initiated the state's Back at Home program to assess and rehouse people throughout the disaster-impacted counties. The assistance that comes under Back at Home is short-term rental assistance and utility assistance, household setups such as furniture, linens, and other household items, since a lot of people have lost literally everything. Housing navigation services that have become really crucial to help people locate housing. People can go out and look themselves, but also, we assist them to do that. And we also provide landlord negotiation. We're finding, and we've found, not just in Craven County, but throughout our counties, that when there's a housing shortage, landlords can charge pretty much anything they want to because people are desperate. And so, sometimes, we need to step in to help people negotiate with the landlord about rent amounts. And then we also provide probably, I was going to say most importantly, but maybe not, but very important, six months of housing case management to ensure long-term housing stability, because most of the people that are left unhoused now had some issues before the disaster. And so, they were struggling before, and so, we're providing them with six months' housing case management after we get them housed to help make sure they're stable. Currently, assessments are being done through North Carolina's 211 system, and then Trillium is doing further review. They're passed on to us, and we review them further. So, if you know anybody that you think is still struggling with housing issues, have them call 211 to be assessed, please. Back at Home has rehoused a total of 55 households, including 77 adults and 41 children, for a total of 118 people. It doesn't sound like a lot, but every single house and landlord that we find is a huge win for us across all of our counties. Specifically, in Craven County, we're assisting 11 households, which is 12 adults and three children. The initial criteria for Back at Home is not Trillium members. This is anybody in the community that's a non-homeowner and people who were living in disaster-impacted counties at the time of the storm. So, this isn't Trillium-specific. Again, if you know someone who would qualify, you think would qualify, please encourage them to call 211. The effort is going to last through April of 2020. A lot of programs end the anniversary of the storm, but we're going to be gone until April 2020, with the option to extend the program if there's still money left and the need is still there. Do you have any questions about Back at Home?
More?
I have one. Are y'all working with Clenworth's Opportunity in the New Bern Housing Authority?
Yes. Yep. We are. Yeah, we kind of invite ourselves to any housing-related agencies, meetings, anything.
Yes. Yes. Chairman, I'd like to say this is one of the worst storms I've seen in a lifetime. And I saw people without places to go, without homes, and a lot of people even upstairs and couldn't get down. Some people were in the attic, and then boats had to go and pick them up. The water stayed in the community so long. And I know on one occasion, even before the storm, I had a young man that come over at my home because he had problems. And I went to the office that was here in New Bern to try to get some help for him. I spent probably a bit of time in the office, but I was still really glad that the office was there, even though after we thought we had him straight, one of the person who really interviewed him was either quit or was terminated the next day, so we had to go through the same process again. This was even before the storm. And finally, last, we did get the fellow some help. And Trillium was a part of that. But I know, at that time, they really wasn't organized as much as I think they should have been, but at least they were there. And I knew where to go to get some help for somebody. Even though I had to use or let somebody use my car to drive it to South Carolina. But from what I can understand, Trillium was there to help with the bill, because he didn't have to pay anything for going up there. And it's good to have an organization such as this. And we got people right now don't have anywhere to go and don't know where to go at. Because we do have a few places, a lot of people don't even know about Trillium. And so, we have some people on this, I know we'll be sending you some people, because people still don't have any place to go. You have people sleeping on the streets, have people sleeping on the bridge. It's just a bad time, but I can necessarily without a doubt, the people that was in this community and other communities saw our need and came to our rescue. That's something that would generally happen. We had a lot of volunteers to come out and help each other. And that's what it's all about. We might say now, because we might be doing all right, say, oh, they don't need that, not even need it. I remember when the first, the organization first began here in New Bern, we had it all by ourselves, but then they decided that other places need to have the same benefits, so to move it to the other counties also. But I know how many people it helped, because people, mentally help people, and people's on drugs, don't know what to do, they might do anything. And you protecting yourselves when you help these people, because you might meet these peoples anywhere. So, we need this, and this drug opus, and all these drugs out here in our system, you got peoples out here that don't care what to do, but you got some people that wants some help. You got some people, a few people, that don't want no help, but we need to help those people that want some help and also help those that don't want to help, don't want no help. Because if we have to put them in the facility so they won't hurt nobody else, we still help them. So, I'm less enthused that we have an organization such as this and doing great work, because I tell you, the county's doing everything it can. You know, a lot of people think the county got a lot of money, but I tell you, the county is struggling because we have, in the entire county, everybody in this county, we have to be concerned about. It's not like the cities, because the county has to go in all the areas and do work, and we need all the volunteers we can get to help save the county budget. I feel like everybody worked so well together in this storm, I think we could have made it if we had, if there had volunteers coming from all areas around about. Otherwise, you got to help everybody. You don't know who going to come to your rescue. And I'm just thankful that we have people in Craven County such as this. Thank you very much.
So, I'd also like to introduce Lauren Swain, also a Craven County resident, who is the Regional Director for us for Hope for NC. Ms. Swain is going to give you some information about Hope for NC, another program that we're operating here at Trillium, to help meet the needs of the entire community following Hurricane Florence.
Lauren? Thank you, Cindy, and thank you for everyone, everyone's kind remarks and support for our programs. So, Hope for NC is a crisis counseling program in response to Hurricane Florence. And it's not just that emotional support, but we have a lot of individuals who are still needing resources in the community. So, we link to any and every resource, whether that's furniture needs, housing, clothing. We have resource specialists that know, that have logs and resource tools of all the resources available, so that we can help support families with any and every need. And it is actually National Hurricane Prepared this week, so our teams are very busy making sure that not just recovery needs are met, but we're also thinking about hurricane season that's going to be coming up in June. So, that's an instrument of work we're serving as well. It is a program funded by FEMA. We cover 12 counties in eastern North Carolina, Craven being one of those, of course. Our teams have been deployed, Hope for NC Crisis Counseling Teams have been deployed since October 2018. We will be serving the community until the anniversary of the event or mid-September. We provide crisis counseling daily, so you'll see our staff in the communities. We have a couple ladies here tonight, Leslie and Kristen. I'll have them stand up so they can see, you guys can see what our shirts look like and our logo, and you may see us, I'm sure you've seen us in the communities daily, making sure we're hitting the pavements, reaching any and every neighborhood that we can. And we appreciate our team so much and everything that they do. And they're here tonight with some resources as well. They have some of our information, our number, so that you know how to reach us. I'm sure there's still folks in the community who do need to hear about us. If there's any events we can be present at. Our community has, communities, all of our 12 counties have been amazing with reaching out to us about events that we can be at, as we reach so many survivors that way. I know there's a slide here, too, about our staff that we've implemented in the community, so you'll look up at the slide there. And in Craven County alone, we've made over 22,000 contacts, which is really, really, really great that that many people we've reached. We also work with local churches, we work with school systems, any and every support. We also work with local churches, we work with school systems, any and every support, you know, so we can reach the most people. I'm going to share with you a story tonight just to illustrate how important it is to get assistance with mental health. He's actually a Craven County resident. He had struggles with housing, losing his housing, having struggles with his RV and not having anywhere to go. He told us that before he met us, before we came across his door, because we do daily canvassing, which is going door to door in our neighborhoods to make sure we meet people where they're at, and he had shared with us that he had had thoughts of harming himself. So you never know that you may be a light to someone in the community, and when you're standing between someone's life or death, you may be the last person that they see. So it's extremely important that we reach everyone that we can. This is an anonymous program. Individuals don't have to give any demographic history, social security number. We just want to know how we can help and what county that you live in. And even if you're not from the county, we want to make sure we still reach an outpouring of support for resources. It's community-based, again, we're meeting individuals where they're at, and there's no cost and no citizenship requirements. So does anyone have any questions?
Board?
Okay.
Y'all have some calls. We'd like to have some.
We do. We have materials. We can leave them on the back table, but our ladies will also be here tonight to make sure that if anyone has any questions, if anyone needs any materials, if you know a group you want to hand them out to. Again, we do presentations at any local community gathering or event, such as churches, schools, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so one last thing I just want to share with you, and I really appreciate your time on the agenda tonight. As I'm sure you know, because of the changes maybe in your own Department of Social Services and your local health department, the Medicaid system in North Carolina is getting ready to undergo a managed care transformation, and many things about the system are going to change. And so I want to point out that while Trillium has been doing all of these things, we are only around part of the legislation until the year 2024. This isn't a contractual requirement with North Carolina Medicaid nor the Division of Mental Health. The stuff we've talked about that we do here tonight is something that we do as Trillium because we live in the communities that we serve. Our staff live here, our children go to school here, and if something doesn't change in the General Assembly in 2025, it will be a commercial plan, not Trillium, that will take over this role, and we're not sure what happens at that point in time. And so I just wanted to come here tonight to sort of share with you that at this point, we exist until 2024, and as we've gone through years of Medicaid transformation, you know, that will only change if the General Assembly changes it. So I want you to be informed about that. Dave Peterson, who's our regional director here in Craven County, and Jean Kenefick, who's our System of Care Lead, certainly can have lots more conversations about that, how to have some conversations at a higher level maybe as a county about what you'd like to see happen in the future, so that we can continue to provide this on-the-ground response to your county in eastern North Carolina. So I just wanted to share that with you tonight. I'm glad to take any questions, if you have any for me. And if not, again, thank you so much for the opportunity and the privilege to serve your county.
Board, any other questions, comments? Ma'am, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, Department matter, Social Services Disaster Supplement Nutritional Assistance Program. Ms. Kimberly.
Oh, okay. Chairman, Commissioner's County Manager, thank you. I know I don't, I'm not Kimberly, but she's here in case you want to speak with her. I didn't know if I would be here in time, so she graciously agreed to come and speak on our behalf in case, kidding I couldn't be here. We bring before you a budget amendment related to the additional administrative funding we received. We're requesting that additional revenue be placed in our contractual services line. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Receive a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussions, any comments? Anybody from the board? Madam Pluck, pro-call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyler?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Glad you came, Josh. Next on the agenda planning, Don Baumgartner, Planning Director. We've got two items, River Road and Nelson Road Safety Improvement Resolution.
He's next door.
He's coming over.
I didn't know he was going to be so quick. I thought you were a Huguenot.
Had to wake you up.
There you go. Well, as the chairman said there, we're here tonight to discuss two topics. The first is dealing with the resolution that's being requested by the Department of Transportation. It's for an intersection of River Road and Nelson Road. It deals with safety improvements. As we mentioned, they have told us that in this particular location, there has been a, there needs to be traffic safety updates at this particular intersection. Back in February of 2017 at this location, two fatal crashes occurred within a 12-day period of each other, resulting in three deaths and six injuries. What the NC Department of Transportation is proposing is an actual traffic circle at this location. They would be utilizing safety monies to install this particular circle, and they are looking at a project for about $1,433,000 to undertake this particular project. In order for this to move forward, what they are looking for with these traffic safety improvements would be a resolution in support of, from the local jurisdiction, in support of some type of safety improvements at this location. So what we would need to do would be adopt the resolution for River Road, Nelson Road Safety Improvements.
Receive a motion?
So move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, any comments?
You differ? Well, this happens to be shared by District Two and District One, and as Don had so eloquently said, that we've had a number of accidents and deaths there. And Jason, Commissioner Jones and I attended a meeting with the citizens up there, and most of them seem to be for this type of situation with the roundabout. My only question is, is that roundabout going to be big enough for some of those trucks that is going to make the turn there?
We actually discussed that very item with the Department of Transportation officials, and what they told us was is that they would be able to accommodate, you know, truck traffic or large vehicles through there, because the center of the island would be some type of sloped concrete, so you will have your asphalt and then some slope on the inner circle, so that trucks could easily go over that particular area if they're unable to keep it within the paved surfaces. Our plan was, is once they have more detailed plans, is to try to look at those to see if we can feel very comfortable with those plans.
And this actually was the best way of decreasing the number of accidents.
Yes, sir.
Scored very well on me.
Yes, sir. They have a process of determining for each dollar that they spend, what the return on that dollar would be. And this particular project returned almost $16 for each dollar that was spent in issues dealing with their rating system on, you know, if there's a death at the intersection, if there's personal property damage and those types of things. So it's a very complicated system to be able to explain, but it did come out as being one of the more cost-effective methods. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You answered the first question that I had, but I've had several folks that have come to me and wanted to know, is the speed limit going to be reduced through that section? I mean, we all know common sense, you're going to have to reduce speed, but currently it's 55 miles per hour. Are they going to put it at 45?
They will reduce the speed. I don't know at this particular time exactly what they will post it for, but there will be a reduction in speed, no question about that.
Okay. The probability, there's a lot of trucks that go through that road between the two warehouses and vehicles. The probability of going through there with a truck loaded and that load shifting, I mean, is that thing going to be sloped enough where you won't have to worry about that truck turning over and so forth?
That question was the question that we ask them, because we know oftentimes that trailers are loaded in the woods and they're not actually loaded, so that the load is centered. Sometimes it's on one side or the other. And they assured us that there would not be an issue with that, but that was why I was saying when the plans are developed, I think we need to try to look at that again just to ensure that there hasn't been some oversight there undertaken, because that road has a tremendous amount of truck traffic on it, either with the wood chip trucks or where logs going to the warehouse or plant.
Do you know if they've reached out to warehouse, or I just use them as an example, or any others?
Not to my knowledge, right. But we did talk with some people in the trucking community, and they were familiar with some of these circles that have been put in at other locations, and they said that they were able to navigate the circles that DOT designed without running up on the curbs. It did require them to have to slow down. You couldn't run full speed, but they were able to stay within the constraints of the paved surface without running over the curbs. Kind of a similar situation to what was being proposed out here, but I think it will be something that we definitely need to, as they develop the plans further, that we need to kind of review that and ask more questions as we see necessary.
In the agenda packet that we received, there was a correspondence here that says, please recall that if funding, the traffic engineer may require the installation of an always stop as an interim measure. I mean, have they given you any assurance that if they do put stop signs, four-way stop signs there? I mean, what other precautionary measures are they going to take?
Right. And, you know, I think in addition to that, I think there needs to be some more discussion held with them about how they're planning to undertake the construction of that location, like you were saying, a four-way stop, or exactly how they're going to be trying to develop that. Will there be detours involved possibly to try to take away some of the traffic in that area? I think we just probably need to have some more conversation with DOT about that, so we can get a good understanding.
As the vice chairman stated, from the meeting that was held, you know, they were proposing two other options. One is the closure of that portion of Nelson Road from Maple Cypress to River Road, which everybody there was against. And then also taking and doing some upgrades to the end of Maple Cypress Road where it comes out to River Road, in which there was also concern about that for the amount of traffic that would go in and out there. And this option was actually, as stated, you know, it came from the citizens themselves, not everybody, but a number of them, as they stayed there and talked, and DOT went back. Since then, you know, I definitely, I mean, I think a lot of folks, you know, feel like this is a little bit overkill for in the rural area. Why not just go and put a motion light, cautious caution light? But as, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but they've told us repeatedly that was not on the table, and they're right.
That is correct.
So since we don't have that option, and we asked them about speed bumps also, and they wouldn't do that.
Right.
So the only thing that we've been given is this is the third option.
Correct.
You know, I mean, again, it came from the citizens there, but there's still a lot of people that are concerned that is it going to be wide enough to accommodate trucks? And you're saying they've told you it is.
Yes.
I know they're on a schedule. I mean, I, you know, I don't know if the questions that's been raised, if it needs to be brought back at our next meeting, or do you feel comfortable if we went on and passed this resolution tonight that the questions that, you know, we've had, that you've said, you know, that probably need to be answered, that they'll still come back to us and allow conversation about it?
I would say that if we proceed on with this and tell them what our concerns are, I would think that they will try to work with us to answer those questions and do what is necessary to, you know, have that circle as a safe means of being able to go up and down that highway. So that's just my opinion, but.
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jones, you may elaborate a little bit on the funding for these programs. This is a special pot of funding that's offered for safety-related projects only. It's at the state traffic engineer's discretion. My understanding, Don, is there's only two times a year where funding requests are considered. One is May, and I believe the other is October.
That is correct.
So I think we're in that window. If you don't do it this time, you may be waiting till October to get it done.
Ma'am, go ahead. River Roads invite people to go 90 miles an hour or whatever their personal version of it is, but going 90 miles an hour and coming into a traffic circle that you didn't know was there can have the same effect for accidents as coming up to a stop sign that you didn't know was there.
Right.
Especially if it's been there for a while. Does this plan include, or is it going to include, a warning sign well in advance to people who perhaps are not as familiar with this road as they should be? I'm not talking yellow flashers, but I am talking about, you know, upcoming, a sign saying upcoming traffic stop, traffic circle, so that if you are flying down the road, that you need, that you know to start slowing down, because if you don't, we're going to have a different version of an accident.
Sure. I would recommend that, you know, we have some more discussions. I don't know that they're that far along yet with their process, but I do know that there are universal signage requirements for things other than if you're going down the road 55 that either say stop ahead or, you know, reduce speed for, you know, for highway conditions.
Well, that's, well, universal sign requirements and common sense do not always overlap.
Right.
So I'd just like to express the concern that we need to have something, reduce speed ahead or something in there.
Sure.
To warn people who may be flying down the road, because no matter what the speed limit is, there are going to be some people who will fly.
Sure.
Don, from my understanding, and I spoke to the engineer, I can't think of his name right now.
Jeff Cabanas?
No, the one in charge of the safety, Hayward.
Hayward.
And he said it's going to be very similar to the one that they have on 13 when you're going over to pick up the Highway 70. And they do have a warning sign there.
Thank you.
Any other? All right. We have a motion?
To move, we had a motion.
We have a motion, and we had a second. We are. Madam Pluck, pro-call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyler?
Yes. Number two, Don.
All righty. The next item is a contract award for Hurricane Florence Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, as well as the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds. In anticipation of notification from FEMA and the State of North Carolina regarding Hurricane Florence mitigation and community development block grant funds, the Planning Department sent out a request for proposals for planning and grant administration of these projects. Staff sent requests to 15 firms and also posted the RFP on the State of North Carolina Interactive Purchasing System. Four firms sent back proposals. We went through the process of taking a sheet and rating the various proposals based on what was asked for in the RFP, and we sent those to each of you. you. Uh, as you will see, Holland Consulting Planners received the highest rating based on the specific items requested within the RFP. Um, Craven County has been working with Holland Consulting, Holland Consulting Planners and has been satisfied with their work. Uh, Holland Consulting Planners is currently working on our FY sixteen flood mitigation assistance program and the fee schedule that is being proposed for the new work is exactly the same as they have been using for our past projects. Um, planning staff request that Craven County award this planning and grant administration contact, contract to Holland Consulting Planners. And the action requested is award the HMGP and CDBG, um, planning and grant administration to Holland Consulting Planners.
I would make a motion to go with Holland.
Motion in a second. Mr. Johnson, you got a second? Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Um, I'm receiving right many calls about, you've got in here the anticipation of notification of when FEMA and the state will start sending out some funds. Do you have any idea?
Uh, we have finally received some notification about the CDBG, um, NR process where we've actually got permission to start the process of trying to draw down the monies, uh, that, that means develop projects and start moving forward with that, with that proposal. We've gotten all the environmental releases done, all the historical releases done. So that project is for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and probably sometime in the next two to three months, we'll be able to have some projects put out to bid and, uh, start with the process of some awards from that perspective.
Don, just to be clear, you're talking about Hurricane Matthew money?
We, we are talking about Hurricane Matthew money and when we wrote these proposals, we were told that they were going to undertake Hurricane Matthew as well as Florence together. So we are not a hundred percent sure on that, but we're trying to cover it so that we don't have any delays. The seven fifty thousand was purely Matthew money, but we've been told that they were going to combine Florence and Matthew together. So we're not a hundred percent sure on that because a lot of people that got hit in Matthew turned right back around and got hit again in Flo- in Florence. So.
My, my point to what Don's saying is that was two and a half years ago with Hurricane Matthew. So while I think I'm appreciative that they're, they're speeding up the process for Florence, it's still been two and a half years for Hurricane Matthew recipients to wait to receive this funding, which Don said he's sort of sure about. I mean, they're getting mixed messages. So I think it's important for us to, I'm sorry to get on my soapbox for a minute, to continue to tell the state the importance of getting Florence money here along with getting the Matthew money moving. It is so vital that we get people back in their homes and begin this work because the longer time it takes, you know, we already heard from our partners in the field what it's like. I mean, we've got to get these folks back in their home. Got to.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, explain exactly what the CDBG, DR funding is.
That's what's called disaster recovery and the NR is called neighborhood revitalization.
So is, is that, um, repairing homes, elevating homes that have been flooded repetitive? Is that what that is?
It, it's addressing the needs of those particular homeowners. Um, hazard mitigation is dealing with elevation, uh, going through the process of tearing something down and putting it back up or buyouts. So that's the hazard mitigation side. This is more of trying to assist these people and getting them back in the house and that could actually include elevation.
I, I know you don't want to just, you know, to share exact locations, but is some of this that's concentrated on Hurricane Matthew, is that, some of that looking towards River Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Okay, we got a motion in a second. Madam Clark?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Don, thank you, sir. All right, next on the agenda, soil and water contract award, emergency watershed protection programs. Uh, Patrick Baker, Natural Resource?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Patrick.
Good evening. So tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about shoreline erosion along the news as a result of Hurricane Florence. We're gonna talk about the emergency watershed protection program and about one site in, in particular for Mr. Robert Mills. All right. After Hurricane Florence, Craven County was made aware of the emergency watershed protection program. This program can be used for recovery measures that if left undone pose a risk to life and/or property. These funds are provided through the United States Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Service. The recovery measure that we use for this project will be executing emergency measures to stabilize shore, stabilize the shoreline to protect structures from further damage. Immediately following Hurricane Florence, Mr. Robert Mills reached out to multiple agencies for assistance with a major erosion problem at his residence. USDA made Mr. Mills aware of the emergency watershed protection program that could potentially help him with his situation. The EWP program requires a local jurisdiction to be a program sponsor. The sponsor of this program is responsible for administration and execution of the activities associated with the project. The Mills site will be performed at no cost to the county or the homeowner. Mr. Wayne Floyd, our disaster recovery consultant, has been and will be working with staff on this project. Now, requests for proposals for the Mills site were sent out on April nineteenth with proposals being due back May the third at four o'clock. On April twenty-sixth, we had a pre-bid meeting and a site showing was held with nine bidders present. Now, since the report, the sheet that you guys got, we have since then had this, uh, bids have come in. The bid review committee has ranked the three bids. We've received three bids on this project. Those were Trader Construction for seventy-six thousand four hundred dollars, SDR for one hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and DRC was a hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Based upon a rating sheet, Trader Construction was selected as the lowest responsible bidder. Now, in order to move forward with this project, the staff is requesting that the Board of Commissioners accept the lowest responsible qualified bidder, Trader Construction, to perform the project. Approve a budget amendment for the funds to be placed in the soil and water operating budget for this year, because this is gonna be a quick turnaround on this project. Grant the chairman authority to execute the required agreements and documents, designate Mr. Jack White III, County Manager, as the primary agent, and Mr. Gene Hodges, Assistant County Manager, as a secondary agent. Now, I've got some pictures on here I'd like to show you if you want to go ahead and look at them. All right, uh, if you would scroll to the next, well, I got the button, don't I? All right. All right. So the one site in particular, Mr. Mills. Now, what you're looking at here, this is a split screen showing the first, the image on the left was, well, no, the image on the right was taken in February before the hurricane. You can see his yard, his bulk, upper bulkhead, lower bulkhead. The image on the left is taken immediately following the hurricane. And you can see just how much of his, that area's gone. It's right up to his house. Now, this was one of the very first sites identified after the storm. And so that's why work has progressed further along on his than any of the rest of them. Uh, now, people ask, well, what are you gonna do to the site? What's the plans? So let's skip, these are some engineer drawings. You can see a little picture in the corner where he took of his house there. That's just what it looks like. So we'll get through the engineer drawings. Now, one thing to keep in mind with this project, they are not there to restore that property where it was prior to the storm. It's an emergency action to stabilize his home. So what you see here, their plans are to come in with field dirt. This is about where the edge of his house is now. Come in with field dirt out twenty feet, slope it down on a two-to-one side slope, and then stabilize this bank with vegetation. And that's what they feel necessary to protect his house from falling over the edge right now. So that's the goal of this program. Now, if he wants to come in later on and restore, add more field dirt back out to where he used to be, he can do that on his own, but that's not the intent of this program. That's what I've got for you right now.
Receiving motion?
Yeah, so move.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
If I may, get here.
Uh, Patrick, um, this was the first one.
This was one of the very first ones, yes, sir.
Yeah, and I've, excuse me, I've had contact from several other homeowners that are, I think, in similar situations.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea how many more are gonna follow this first one?
Right now, we have identified potential sites, a hundred and thirty-two parcels.
One forty-two.
One thirty-two.
One thirty-two.
Yeah, and this runs from New Bern right on down past the Ferry Dock, right on toward Quirky County.
Right.
Now, one thing that we have done, we, we originally identified sites. We tried to look at what we thought would qualify for the program. So we sent out, uh, in order for us to access the site and for the feds to access it, we sent them, at that time, we were at a hundred and eight. We sent out over a hundred and eight right-of-entry forms, notifying them of the program and their right-of-entry. So far, we have received completed right-of-entry forms that have been back to us, forty-nine out of over a hundred and thirty-two now that's been sent out.
My understanding of it is that for the federal government to fund this, the, the property, the building, has to be in jeopardy. Is that correct?
That's correct. Now, that's, there has to be an imminent threat to a structure.
Right.
Now, what the definition of imminent is, I'm not sure. But the thing about this is, the feds are solely responsible for making the determination of whether or not it qualifies. That does not fall on us. So if a property does, that's great. If it does not, then it's, that's all on the feds.
So the federal government is gonna look at each of these requests?
Yes, sir.
Individually?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And they are right now in the process of doing that. Uh, we've gotten so many sites that the feds that we have available to us, they were able at this time to dedicate like one day a week to come down here to Craven County and look at these sites. And, and they were getting about seven or eight sites a day. And I specifically asked them, I said, "Look, with the sites we've got, you're doing one, one day a week, seven or eight sites a day. It's gonna take us about four more months to get this done." So they have assured me that they're putting together a group to come down here to focus solely on this, multiple people to come on and get these site assessments done.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jones?
He, he has.
Any further comments, questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clark?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyer?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead. Would you call me regards to Swift Creek, uh, in Vanceboro? There's a big problem there.
Yes, sir.
Patrick, thank you, sir.
That's okay.
Okay. Next, finance, Craig Warren, finance director.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, I have two items on the agenda for your consideration tonight. Um, the first one is the Public School Building Capital Fund. It's an application that, uh, the Board of Education and the commissioners jointly approve. Uh, and it's to be submitted to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Um, the application is required to draw down the lottery proceeds that have been allocated to Craven County in the Public School Building Capital Fund. Uh, these funds are restricted and can only be used for school construction projects or to, for debt service related to these projects. At this time, I'd like to ask for the board's approval.
Receiving a motion?
So, sorry.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, since I've been on my soapbox one, I'll go one more time. Uh, when this program was started, we were authorized by general statute to receive forty percent of all the lottery proceeds. We currently receive seventeen percent, which has been the norm since, I believe, about two thousand and nine?
Twelve.
Twelve, excuse me. So, uh, just to point out that we took on debt knowing this program was coming forward and then the money was reduced by the General Assembly. We work every year as our number one priority in county government for our legislative, uh, list is restating the lottery funds to the statutory requirement. And again, when we go Wednesday, that is number one on our list again this year. This money will help you make the difference in the eighty-five million dollar shortfall that you have for school capital needs over the next ten years, simply put.
And that change is equated to about, about a million dollars per year in all funding.
Now, we have a motion in a second. We have any further discussion? Madam Clark?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, the second item in your agenda is the annual audit contract. RSM has submitted a proposal to perform the county's annual audit for the current fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. The proposed fee is seventy-seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, which represents a two percent increase over last year. Uh, this fee includes compliance testing for, for up to four major federal and state programs. Uh, if additional programs are determined to be required during the engagement, those will be assessed a fee of five thousand per program. There is one notable change for the fiscal year twenty nineteen in the way that eligibility testing for the Medicaid and Attentive Programs will be conducted. Uh, last year, these, uh, programs were tested under a separate agreed-upon procedures agreement, uh, from the audit contract. Uh, this year, the Office of State Auditor will be contracting on, with their own vendor to carry out the testing of these programs. So that will be resulting in a slight savings that we will not have to pay this year.
Receiving a motion?
So move, sorry.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, um, being new to the board, um, this firm did our audit last year. They're, you're proposing they do it again next year or this year, this year. How many years have we used the same auditor? Do you know?
They've been, we've been using them for roughly twenty years.
Is there any, in your opinion, is there any value in changing that up to get a, a new set of eyes, um, a new set of eyes to, to maybe look at some things differently or some different things? I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, each, each year, the state treasurer's office sends out a list of all the audit fees, uh, that all the counties pay throughout the state. And I do look at that to kind of assess where we're sitting at. Um, there is not, locally, there's not a, a large enough firm probably to handle the county's audit. So they would be coming from out of state or, or maybe west, you know, uh, west, in the western part of the state. And so, so there could be, um, some, some possible, some, some savings if you bid this out. But then again, you would probably lose that in the, having new auditors and rebuilding that relationship, um, with that new group.
Thank you. I, I wanted to go back to your comment. There's not another firm locally that's big enough to do an audit of this entity? I'm not sure if I agree with that. Being familiar with some of the ones that are in the Charlotte and the Raleigh area, um, is this equate, is, is this based on the list of people who have audited county and municipalities? So have experience in it? Um, I, I'm-
Let me clarify that. When I, when I say that, I mean locally, you know, within Craven County.
Locally meaning Craven County. All right, that's different. So if you said, let's say we expanded it to Raleigh, Charlotte, I think-
Right, yeah. There's other firms, much larger firms that have, you know, offices in Raleigh and Charlotte, but none of them have a, a presence here in Craven County.
Mr. Chair, last time we bid this out was in, uh, twenty fifteen, Craig, I believe.
Yes.
And we only had two bids. Uh, one of them was a company out of Hickory, North Carolina. The name is leaving me now.
Martin Starren.
Martin Starren. And then RSM were the only two people that bid on the account. Obviously, um, you know, we circulated just like we would anything else. But, uh, at the time, Mr. Starren's portfolio did not include a whole lot of county work, particularly some of the social service programs. And I think the, the board decided to stay with RSM at that time.
Yeah, they, they also, they do a lot, that firm does a lot of local governments.
I know RSM is an outstanding firm. I'm not arguing that. They're nationally reputable, okay? Um, our local branch of it. I'm not saying that they are not qualified by any stretch of the imagination. Um, with it, it's, it's our branch of a, of a great big corporation. But I think I may share Commissioner Booker's concerns. Nor, the normal protocol is after five or six years, you switch auditing companies because everybody gets too comfortable and you need fresh eyes. So I think next time it's worth considering.
If that is the board's desire, next time I will definitely look into it.
Okay, and the, the board may not support that. May or may not be, okay? And the Board may not support that a year from now. But all I'm stating is I think I share Commissioner Booker's concern with this. 20 years is a long time. That statement.
Let me ask one question. We did not bid this out, then?
Bid it out in 2015, sir. And we're under current extensions under that contract.
We had extension agreements in that 2015 contract, year-to-year, okay. All right, we have a motion?
There's no real set in time. It would just be when the Board decided to bid it out.
Gotcha, gotcha. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Line?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, appointments. Pending, Adult Care Home Advisory, Nursing Home Advisory Committee, New Bern Planning and Zoning, and ETJ. Okay, current appointments. Let me see. Craven, Pamela Coke, Craven Regional Library Board. If it's all right with the Board, I'd like to hold this until our June meeting. We still have some issues that's ongoing that we need to be aware of with our surrounding counties of what may happen. So, if that's all right with the Board, we'll hold this one until we get more involved. Okay. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one application, Ira Whitford.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we appoint Ira Whitford for this position.
Okay, no objections, my acclamation. Down East Regional Planning Organization, Tred Mitchell is currently serving as an alternate and will be willing to fill the position left vacant by Chad Braxton.
I would approve that.
Okay, that will also leave that position open. So, we'll need an alternate for that position in the future. Is that not correct, Manager? Okay, so if I hear no objections, then Tred Mitchell would move up into that position. And if you keep reminder of what's upcoming and the appointments that's out there, we appreciate it. Okay. Next on the agenda, petitions of citizens.
Okay. Don Oster.
Please give us your name and address, sir.
Yes, my name, good evening. My name is Don Oster. I live at 210 Columbine Crossing in Pollocksville, Craven County, 28573. So, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about recycling. I visited the Sunoco Materials Recovery Facility, or MRF for short, in Jacksonville on May 1st. More about that in a moment. At the special meeting on April 26, an article about recycling in Yale 360 was referenced. The first half of the article spoke about the current poor market for recyclables. I'd like to focus on the second half of the article. It pointed out that two state-of-the-art MRFs are being proposed in South Carolina and Alabama. Also, Norma from Waste Industries touted their new state-of-the-art facility. And quoting from the article, "Several U.S. materials recovery facilities are expanding operations, upgrading equipment, and adding workers to improve sorting and reduce contamination so that materials are acceptable for more discerning buyers," close quote. This investment in MRFs tells me that there is a demand for quality recyclables and that the problem is contamination. During my visit to Sunoco, I learned that only 10% of what they receive goes to the landfill, and that discarded material is contaminants. We need to educate our residents about good recycling practices. And we can use Sunoco's document as a reference. And I'd like to submit this nice colorful document to the Commissioners. We can create an all-weather label that is attached to the lid of new containers. And in addition, our contract with WMI should state that we can recycle everything that Sunoco receives. And this is a lot more comprehensive. It's in the contrast. Sunoco is a worldwide packaging manufacturer. They are in the recycling business to procure raw materials for their manufacturing. The Jacksonville plant sends 90% of their cardboard and paper stock they receive directly to Sunoco mills. Their plastic is going to Virginia for carpet manufacturing, and the other materials are dispatched by their corporate offices. We have a home for our recyclables. In closing, the Commissioners in the '90s were commended for looking to the future, for developing a curbside recycling program that is a model. We now have the opportunity to improve on that model through education and our partnership with Sunoco. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you wouldn't mind giving that to the Clerk.
Michael Schacter?
Michael Schacter, 1711 Tusco Rims Road, New Bern, North Carolina. I am the President of the Carolina Nature Coalition, and I want to thank the Commissioners for continuing the curbside recycling. I know we've been here a long time, so I'll be fast. The members of the Carolina Nature Coalition have been talking to the county and to the city about doing recycling education for some time. And we were told to wait for the new contract. I hope that seeing the response of the community, the Commissioners will hold public hearings and a public comment period before making decisions on these issues the next time. This summer, two summers ago, the Carolina Nature Coalition organized a trip to the Sunoco recycling plant in Jacksonville. And we learned a lot of facts there. The general manager took us aside and talked to us about what Sunoco did take. I hope that the Board will take up the suggestion, I think the lady from Waste Management suggested, that you take a tour of the Sunoco plant, and I hope you will take that up. I think it would be very instructive. Finally, the Carolina Nature Coalition, which is a completely volunteer organization, nonpartisan, will continue to work with the county and the city to educate the population and the Commissioners on recycling and other environmental issues. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Carol Oster?
My name's Carol Oster. I live at 210 Columbine Crossing in Pollocksville, and thank you for your time. But also, thank you very much for that new contract that you signed in keeping recycling in this community. I am also here with the Carolina Nature Coalition, and we are, as Michael said, we are an educational and awareness group. I do the website for them. We have 400 contacts, and we have monthly environmental meetings. We've been doing it for the last five years. In recent weeks, without really knowing that, you know, you were gonna be signing a new contract, we actually met with our monthly group and talked a lot about recycling. And then what happened after that was is we were invited to Earth Day, and we actually came forward and started to talk to a lot of people who are interested in, you know, Earth Day and being better environmental citizens. That led to going to Kids' Day. And I know earlier, when we first started this evening, we kind of said something about we have to start with that young age, and we have to teach the kids at home how to be better environmental citizens by recycling. When we were at Kids' Day, this was like the perfect opportunity to then speak to parents. And because there was such a much-publicized, recent changes, people read about it in the newspaper, it was the perfect time for us to be forward and being able to then continue to send our message. So, we had these three events. We spoke to hundreds of citizens in Craven County, hundreds, three events. Some of the thoughts were, I thought that they ended recycling. We were so upset. Others were saying, oh, we knew that they signed a new contract, but they still had a lot of questions. What's going on? What's happening? So, because we visited that Sunoco Recycling Center, we had the answers. We could actually explain it all to them. So, what we want to do is, as a Carolina Nature Coalition, we want to go forward. We're not asking you for any money. We just want your blessings. And we want to continue awareness, environmental awareness. It's so important. There's not only a market for it, but there is a strong desire from people in this community to do what's right and to do what's right with our waste stream. Thanks so much for all you do.
Hi, May. Jack, I want both of the people that was up here talking, I want to make sure they get with you or staff, because I think we've got a misconnect here between what Sunoco is willing to take and what our contract is written with what Waste Industries has contracted for us to do. So, I want to make sure we're in compliance and looking at that. I don't want to disconnect on that, because I'm hearing different things here. And looking at what they've got and what we have in a contract is a little bit different. So, I want to make sure we all understand that.
That's important for us to, yeah.
Hal James?
Yeah, you do. Well, he skipped you.
I'm sorry, I do.
No, no, we'll let Mr. James go, and it won't have you. Sorry.
Hal James, 305 Calico Drive in New Bern. And I want to speak about the new rules concerning citizens' petitions, and specifically, the restraints on what can be said by petitioners. I've consulted with an attorney on the subject and have been told that these new rules impose a prior restraint which infringes on speech before it is spoken. And that has repeatedly been identified by the Supreme Court as most egregious of constitutional violations. I'm sure you're aware that those are not words of my choosing. I just want to put you on notice that I'm seriously considering pursuing this issue in court.
Thank you, sir.
Sandy Wheeler.
Sorry, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sandra Wheeler. I live at 1207 Longview Drive in New Bern, and I'll make this as short as I am. I'd like to thank you first for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm a native of North Carolina. I'm 74 years young. I've been an activist since I was about five, stuffing envelopes. And I spent my early years after moving from North Carolina in various states across the country where recycling was not only expected, it was mandated by city and county codes and laws. When I first moved here to eastern North Carolina, I was very appreciative and happy to find out that we do curbside recycling here. And for that, thanks. I also agree with all the others who have talked that recycling is an extremely important issue, and one that I hope the county Commissioners will agree, is one about which the public needs to be fully educated. To that end, the Carolina Nature Coalition would like to and is willing to work with other partners to coordinate a collaborative community awareness forum on recycling. We could do this in either July or August. And I would just like to ask that you please let us know who in the county that we should be working with toward this endeavor. We plan to invite Sonoco. We plan to invite city, county, and of course, the general public. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Doug Hadnot?
We take care of a lot of your money problems, because you had not with assistant principals and other areas. My name is Albert Douglas Hadnot. I'm a native of New Bern, North Carolina. I'd like to thank the county Commissioners and their staff and employees, men and women, for letting me talk to you. The subject I'm speaking on tonight is the failure of Craven County in using their natural resources to produce an unlimited amount of electrical power. I don't know why this hasn't applied. It's been applied anywhere in the United States before. And by the way, before I'm gonna stop right there, being educational, Dr. Steve Reed and none of the doctors are here. I wish they were. I knew Dr. Reed. I did the addition on his Honey Mountain Wedge Wood Drive area. And Dr. Reed was a very sharp man. He kept, and Joe Squires was the county bill inspector. This is the Hoover Dam I'm talking about. It's not the same scale. Don't have to be, but it could be. It's feasible, it's practical, but most important, it's possible. Now, I know that sounds impossible, but it is possible. We're failure, it's failure to using the resources that you have to achieve unlimited electrical power. I'm not gonna be able to get through all these. I worked in construction for many years. I'm highly skilled in construction. That's how I got this idea. And again, I'm not gonna be able to present my whole idea, but I want to just read just some footnotes. This would be a major project, and once completed, would require 24-hour-a-day, seven days a week, 365 days a year to maintain. It would also employ many men and women, some highly skilled, plus some skilled labor. This project would require electrical, structural, and all types of engineers, architects, environmental impact, soil compassion tests, different types of contractors, inspections, et cetera. It would be very costly, but the payoff would be large. The vision of this program and idea came from God, and to the mind of Albert Douglas Hadnot. I'm highly skilled myself in all types of construction. I would want to be recognized as a visionary behind this project. I also would want to be as much as possible in quality control, along with others, and what would be one of the most beneficial construction projects to date in many a year. There are many ways to do this project, but the outcome is the same. And it would probably go national and international. There's no, I have no doubt about that. I'm just so well-versed in the field of construction. I was superintendent on the flight line, shared point with DJ and Em on the flight simulator. I was general foreman on Bill's D and E at Craven Community College. I'll end there. I can name a lot of places I've worked. But I'm really sad that I couldn't go through this the way I wanted to, mainly with a nail holding my pocket. There's a right way and a wrong way to hold a nail. Maybe Craven County right now, when you mash your finger with a nail, you know it hurts. I learned one time the right way to hold a nail was at the top. So, when you miss it, the nail don't mash your finger on the wood. You don't pop the blood out of your hand. Maybe Craven County is not, I got the question, is not...
Sir, thank you.
Yes, sir. My phone number is 229-9767, if you'd like to get in contact with me.
Thank you.
Johnny Clark?
Oh, leave that thing. Good afternoon, or good evening, I'm sorry. My name is Johnny Clark. I reside at 5560 Highway 55 West, Cove City, North Carolina. And I appreciate the opportunity of being able to come and speak to the Board this evening. I have some questions for the Board. But I also understand your policy of not answering questions on the cuff, which is fine. Being in the same situation that you've been in, that you would need to go home and maybe, or meet and discuss some things before you give your answers. However, from what I understand, if I understood it right, one of our citizens of Craven County came before this Board not long ago, and was told that there were certain words that were not allowed to speak. If I'm wrong, I need to be corrected. If I could, I'd be corrected tonight. Such words as Democrat or Muslim. The question is this, is this true? Period, yes or no? Period, yes or no? If it is true, now I would like to ask the question, what happened to our freedom of speech here in Craven County? Also understood as a kid growing up, tried to teach my children the very same thing. We have some rights here in the United States of America. Also found, I did that as growing up, you got to start somewhere when you got a problem. You don't start at the top and come down. You start at the bottom and you go up. You're my bottom. If I, as a citizen of North Carolina and of Craven County, cannot come to this board and voice my concerns over things that are happening in my country, in my state, in my county, and in the cities that we live in, then who do we go to? You've been elected to represent the citizens of Craven County. So I would want you to just listen to what we have to say. You may not like it and I'm going to say the same thing I said last time. You know, I've been in this country for a long time too, sixty-nine years. I've also learned something. If you can't stand the heat as I said last time, get out of the kitchen. Doesn't matter who you are or what you are, we all have to be put on the burner at some time or another. You've been elected to sit on the burner. So have fun. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ray Griffin.
Ray Griffin, basketball, North Carolina, nineteen eighty-one, Streets of Fair Road. There's one thing in life that I've learned that hurts more than anything else in the world and that's the truth. Many are trying to hide the truth, they're trying to silence the truth and they're putting on a back burner. We need more, we don't need more politicians and people today who desire the lust for money and power. Our rights are slowly eroded, our citizens are Christians. We go to court and we swear to tell the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth. The Constitution says we hold this truth to be self-evidenced, that all men are created equal and they are endured by Creator, that secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving the set just power from incentive government, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute a new government. Listen to this. A man of right spirit is not a man of narrow and private views, but is greatly interested and concerned for the good of the community to which he belongs and particularly of the city in which he resides and for the true welfare of the society of which he is a member. So you should be doing that. You should preside in this city, respect it and what the people have tried to tell you and the word was used, fake news. Now, I don't know about what was written, but I do know that when I looked at that picture in the county cover, that was not fake news. The gamble was stopped and I was told not to use the word Democrat or Muslim. And if I'm wrong, you'll have to get the video and show me. But it is said that our religious views and the things are coming to this, that the truth is no longer being accepted. Thank God for one thing, and I've talked about abortion, I'll continue to talk about it because it's murder, but they have got a bill out now called a heartbeat bill. Thank God that it's simply saying that one breath of life instills life. One breath is considered life. And thank God now even the Democrats are coming on board with that. Fifty-five percent of them are simply saying this is something that we need to look at. The Republicans is about seventy-eight percent. And going back, I listened the other night about one of your commissioners said, well, I had to prepare for so long for this event and to happen. I thought that's what you were getting paid for. One complained about the telephone calls and different things they were getting, well, that's probably your job description to listen to what the citizens are saying. So we all need to, we need to listen to you and what you were saying, what tonight was very informative, what has happened tonight. But one thing about it, we all must listen for the truth. The word of God will live forever. The truth will last forever. The Bible will endure forever. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Glenn Fink.
My name's Glenn Fink. I live at six forty-six Goose Creek Road. I just wanted to share some thoughts about Trillium and I have no doubt that the Trillium Organization, all the people on the ground have a huge heart for what's going on, both their leadership and the people on the ground. I do want to say though, that I saw in the overheads that like thirty thousand was provided through donations and there wasn't a lot of other comments about the donations. And I know, and there was discussions about the efforts going door to door, getting with all the citizens and this was free. You know, the stuff was happening was free. Well, everything that I've read about the way that model works, Trillium and others, is that they provide a connection service between citizens and Medicaid services and they get paid for that and they get money above and beyond what it costs them to do that and that goes into reserves. And so those reserves are used for other things that they think are of value. So this is paid for by Medicaid except for those cases where it's donations. So it's great, it's a wonderful thing for that stuff to happen, but it's not free. And it's not, you know, the Trillium's doing it, but it's almost like a campaign, you know, to say, you know, look what we're doing. But it really is taxpayer dollars that's going forward for this, except those cases, and maybe it's a larger portion than I realize, where it truly is either somebody doing it for no pay or people are providing donations. And I still disagree with the model where a third party ends up getting reserves from Medicaid payments and makes choices about what that goes towards, which could in fact be beneficial to what their business model is. And they grow the business, they say, we don't want anyone, we want to contact everyone and we want everyone to have this opportunity. And it's a business growing opportunity that isn't necessarily focused on just the people that need those benefits, which many do, but it also, it throws the net wide and I don't know how much vetting goes on to make really, because it's a method to grow the business. Anyway, I really struggle with the business model. I know there's good folks there. I know they have a heart for doing good things, but I really struggle with the whole business model.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Okay. That ends that county attorney's report.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
No report.
That's a good thing.
County manager.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, appreciate the opportunity tonight. Just two quick updates for you. Reminder, on Wednesday, we'll be leaving here at six-thirty for our county assembly day in Raleigh. We have scheduled appointments with all of our legislators locally. Again, a lot to talk about with hurricane relief and other active things going on up there related to budget or legislation that we may be interested in. So for commissioners who can't go, we'll certainly provide a report to you written when we get back. And lastly, I wanted to go ahead and talk to you a little bit about the Budget Work Session Week, which begins May twenty. Last time, we covered some things. The chair and I have been working together to set the schedule. As you're aware, May twentieth, I'll present the recommended county budget to you that morning. We'll have a regular commissioner meeting. We'll then go out to Cooperative Extension to visit with Mr. Glasgow, who was here earlier, and get a report on the activities of Cooperative Extension, soil and water conservation in the local FSA office. After that, we'll continue to stay at Cooperative Extension while you'll receive the long awaited Facility Needs Assessment that the board approved roughly a year ago. We'll have the architect and engineering firm that did that report come in, give you a brief and relay the news to you for what the results were. My recommendation in talking with the chair, once we're done, is to probably later in the day, is to begin work on the fire department budgets first and then start fresh Tuesday morning in this room at eight-thirty and work our way through the book the rest of the week with our general county fund. Any questions on that? Mr. Chair, I believe you sent an email out that said just be prepared to stay all day.
All day.
So eight-thirty to roughly five.
All four days, hopefully not Friday, but Friday we're only going to go to twelve since it's going to be a long weekend. One thing if I may add before my turn comes up, before we don't forget it. If everyone, since we're going to Raleigh on Wednesday, if everyone would take a look and scan over, I doubt if you're going to read the thirty-five pages, but House Bill nine-seventy-one, I need you to take a look at that and give me feedback before we go to Raleigh to discuss that.
You may elaborate on that just a touch. House Bill nine-seventy-one was introduced last week. It is proposed legislation that would work to modernize the alcoholic beverage control system in North Carolina. In layman's terms, it would look toward privatization for the ABC system in North Carolina. Again, long bill at thirty-five pages, a lot of moving parts in it. It is in committee now, but one of the items that was of most interest to me was how the permitting system would work for a private system. Basically, what the bill says is that for every ABC store now, there would be one private permit issued. So we have five ABC stores, there would be five private permits. There's also a counterbalance to that, that between twenty-ten and present time, any county that's grown seventy-five-hundred people would get one additional permit per seventy-five-hundred people. So if you're in a county that had growth of, you know, fifteen thousand, you'd get two additional permits. Based on our growth, we have not, we've not seen seventy-five-hundred new residents in that time period, so we would be with the five. And it gets really complicated when it talks about how the funding works in a private system, how much you would get versus what you get now from a county standpoint, how that, you know, where it would be sort of siloed with mental health and alcohol awareness and public safety and all the things that we do now. There's a lot of study that needs to be on the bill. It is brand new, it is in committee and, Mr. Chair, I think what you're looking for is, you know, the boards will in this support, not support, to let the ABC board know.
I think if us is going up there, we got a chance to talk with our legislators to see how it's going. I don't think, at least from my perspective, reading and looking at it, I think we're heading in that direction now, whether it goes this year or it goes in the future years, but I think there needs to be something put in there to where it holds the counties harmless for a number of years until we can pick up that slack. Because right now, we're receiving a little over a million dollars from the ABC board, which equates to one point one cent on our tax rate.
Right.
So the way it's reading out there, we're nowhere near going to get that.
Right.
What we can make out, so.
It's a per gallon tax.
I just need to know what this board wants those going to talk about and what your feelings are. If your feelings say, hey, let it go and move on, that's fine, but I need to know, I would like to know anyway, what your thoughts are on it.
Okay. And so, last thing, I just want to remind the board, on May fifteenth, the State Supreme Court will be here in New Bern at City Hall, holding two sessions. I think each of you got an invitation to that. Certainly sort of a unique experience there, so. Any further questions?
Any questions for the manager?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's go around to Commissioner. Commissioner McKay.
Yes, I just have one thing, I have more, but I'm going to let you talk about that one. I did go to the Harvard Chamber of Commerce the other day and I got some nice books, have some good information in there. Got all the representative out of Raleigh and my name's in there and all the commission names in there. So I would like to give each commissioner one of his books and you can read it at your leisure. And also I got one for the county manager and it has some very, very good information in there. How many you got down there, six? Did it? Everybody got one?
I got one.
No, didn't want to backboard.
No, I got one. I got one.
Okay. Assistant manager and county manager.
You have to remember, I live there.
Yeah, it's good information in there. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sampson, sir.
I would like to say we had a successful cleanup in the Duffield area of New Bern. And I have something here that I would like to bring to our attention about how people can work together and just about accomplish anything. Now, the Duffield community and the Phoenix Project, at least the Phoenix Project sponsored a cleanup campaign on May the second through the fourth, that was Thursday, Friday, and The president is Pastor Robert Johnson and the vice president is Ms. Annie Shaw. Altogether, there are ten members, all of nine took part, all of them took part. Rhonda was responsible for getting the luncheon, lunch, donated on Thursday and Friday by Carolina East President, Mr. Leggett, and shared about Greg and Kelly Muse. The wonderful volunteers was Alderman, Barbara Best, and Heather Steve. Unitarian Universal Church was also there. Church Chip Hughes Department and Public Works all had great hands to work with their committee. Now, we had our, in the committee, we had three inmates, I think we're three people from the sheriff department. And they worked all over by cemetery, they're picking up trash everywhere. And I just was looking at different areas and the people, I tell you, they were doing an outstanding job. Also had our young people that came out and individuals and every one of the, the members of the nonprofit, the Phoenix Project, every one of them was there picking up trash. And also, we had the head of Pastor Antio Belvin from Hurt Hubert. Some of y'all might not know where Hubert is, just over around Kelsey. You are truly Commissioner Janet Sampson, Jr. The city even picked up heavy, all the heavy stuff in the community. They gave people opportunities to put out any types of trash they had at their house or any heavy equipment. The only thing they didn't want to put out on the streets were big televisions, tires, and batteries. But everything else, they were picking up. I went around this morning after, after all the young people, we had young people coming from all areas around the county, different areas, to come in and help pick up this trash. And now, this is one nonprofit that I know is working in the community. They did an outstanding job. I remember them getting one grant, fifty thousand dollar grant, and they have put it back in the community. And we will be inviting them here, so each of you that will be at the meeting, we invite them, we'd be glad to let you, if you want to interview them, because they are on the road to make Craven County a better county. And also, we had, the sheriff department was, they had a, gave permission that they would send someone on Friday, no, Thursday. And they showed up and they did a grandstand job, but after that, we find our major came out with some more volunteer sheriffs and inmates. Most of you know him, Mac Fadden. And most of you know him, Mac Fadden, and they went around picking up trash. Now, a lot, a lot, a lot of people, a lot of the public would say, well, the peoples in the Duffield community, they just throwing trash out in the streets instead of going and picking it up. But I'd just like to let you, let you know that the storm, when the storm went through, the only thing it carried, carried back out there, that most of it was water. All the stuff that they brought in the community was left, and anyone that was in that storm, they know what happened when the, when all that water stood up in the community for days at the time. And when it went out, they had trash everywhere, but those, those volunteers did an outstanding job, and they deserve thanks. And I'd just like to see people work together as they were working together. I'd like to see these nonprofit organizations go out in the public and be saying and do these great things to help other people. Because we know we have a lot of nonprofits, they're like, they're working at the top, but very seldom you see them at the bottom. But these people right there at the bottom, young girls, they came out there in, in Saturday, it was kind of warm Saturday too, and they came out and walked the streets in Duffield and picked up trash. And I mean, we had all colors out there. And when people working together, I'm a witness that people can do everything or anything that needs to be done to make this a community, a better community for not only myself, or not only an other individual, but for everybody. This one is supposed to be about, working together to make this the best county, and I believe this is about the best county in the 100 counties in, in North Carolina. So I thank the volunteers very much, I thank those who donated their times on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, three days of it. And I thank the ones who gave out all their, their, all of their tools and bags and pickups, and I, I didn't know those are, pickup stick cost so much money, but they tell me that it's 35, 40 dollars apiece. That's, that's for the, those little things that pick up trash. It's got handles on it, it got little, little double forks on it that they pick up the trash and put it in the bag. I imagine did this call, but I used to pick it up, they had one little stick that had a little sharp part on it, but when we came, became worried about a lot of germs, we, we had to get rid of those sticks so the people wouldn't contact no type of disease, because you don't know what you're picking up when you got those sticks, you're just picking up everything, a lot of time your hand get on them. But I, I'm just an enthusiast of the volunteers in our county. I always said we have some of the best volunteers in Craven County, and they, they double proved to me that we do have some good volunteers in Craven County. They're willing to work without getting paid for it, and I'm just thanking them very much. And I thank the ones who donated to help out in this situation, and while we was out there, one of the, one of the adults that, on the board, the Phoenix Board, he, he said went to the back and he went to pick up his report, and there's someone had donated $2,000 to the Phoenix Organization. And I know that they had one donation that I, I didn't know about, and, and the county manager was telling me, said, well, I'm so glad you have my picture in the paper, like I had got it. And I know that people see commissioner in the paper getting a whole bunch of money, they're gonna begin to talk. But I said, no, that wasn't, I didn't get no donation since the day, but the Phoenix Organization got it from one of the churches in New Bern. And we're just thankful for all our volunteers, people willing to go out, especially on the weekend, because most people already, always had their weekend planned. But those people set their plans aside to come out and help clean up the county. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Booker.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell.
Short and sweet. ECU met with a variety of local elected officials and community leaders on the 26th about new outreach programs that ECU is developing to assist local communities. This is a new initiative that comes out of the UNC Board of Governors. It's statewide, but ECU was, received some significant funding, so we're hoping that's gonna show some promise. There was a good community event by Allies for Cherry Point last Friday that was well-attended. Continues to focus on the, the visibility that ACT gives towards our military community down at Cherry Point, both fleet readiness center east and the wing and the air station itself. The new shelter director's on board, and I went out to meet her, that looks very promising. So I'm glad that we're getting back to normal with that one. And finally, Carteret County is operating something that is called the Down East Express. This is a daily bus trip that goes up 70 to Raleigh, so that you have a doctor's appointment or you need chemo, or you need to see a particular specialist, you can ride the Down East Express. They will take you to your appointments, pick you up, and bring you back home. They only ask that the appointments are made between 10:00 and 2:00 for people who are unable or do not feel comfortable to ride it. There are seven counties that are involved, two do not have MOUs, but they, Carteret County is trying to be good citizens, so if someone needs that type of assistance, they will pick them up at the mall and deliver them back home, even though we're not a signatory to the MOU. So good program, good for the environment, and also good for citizens who can't drive. That's all, sir.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Yes, I attended a Highway 1764 meeting, and I think one of the big things that came out of that meeting was how the hurricanes over the last several years, and also snow, have affected the budget for transportation as far as the roads are concerned. And there's really no way of planning how much you need in a budget to take care of these storms, because you don't know how big the storms are gonna be and how much damage they're gonna do. So it could affect some of the maintenance on the roads in the future, and I think we all should be aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I have a couple of things here I'd like to bring up here. I need each of the board members to think about during the budget session, the 22 May session, we starting at 8 o'clock, but we also have the hospice breakfast that we normally attend and go to, so think about that if you want to push the start for budget later so we can attend the hospice breakfast. If you please let me know on that one, when we start the workshop on, on Monday. FRC Change of Command is 31 May. Colonel Harper will be relinquishing command and retiring from there, and I think that's it.
Um, Chair, Bruce, he's resigned from the executive director of the Haverchimical Commerce. You know that, don't you?
Entertaining motion?
So move.
Motion second, all in favor?